6:30. You guys know the drill, pretty much. If you'd like any coffee or water that is in the kitchen, so feel free to help yourself. But it is 6:30 and we will, if we're good in the back there, Joe? Okay, we will call the July 14th regular meeting of the East Bay Charter Township Board to order, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join me.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anne will do roll call attendance, and as I mentioned to you, Sue is out not feeling well, and Matt is out of town this week.
Absent and excused. Matt Cortaid.
Here.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Walters.
President.
Lyle.
Here.
And Friend.
Here. Okay, with that, we'll go to the agenda. We'll review for conflict of interest and then look at approving the agenda. We have the consent agenda, standard types of things with foreclosed property on there, organizational reports from Grand Travers County and Grand Travers County Road Commission, then we'll take a look at our audit, and also visit with our accounting firm, our engineering, Parks Commission update, and then planning and zoning, which has a couple different sections to it. So with that, is there any conflict of interest declared? Okay, hearing none, is there approval of the agenda?
Go move.
Support.
Okay, motion by Lyle, support by Walters. Yes, I know, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying yes. Yes? Any opposed by no? Okay, we'll move forward with the agenda. We do have an opportunity for public comment. Our public comment policy is printed on the back of the agenda. If anybody would like to deliver public comment, please feel free to step up and share your perspective with us. Seeing nobody jumping to their feet, we will move on to correspondence and report. The board knows they have a section of correspondence and report in here, and this month it contains the Grand Travers County, oh, I should have said Road Commission in there, Road Commission weekly updates for the last, for the four weeks in June. We also have the Travers Connect Regional Economic Ecosystem Report that comes out in the spring, and Planning and Zoning Quarterly Report, Ambulance Quarterly Report, and Supervisor's Meeting Log. And I know Tracy was on vacation and said her reports will be in next month's meeting. So with that, does anyone have any questions on any of those? Okay, and then we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll have Anne introduce it. I will mention, and I believe I mentioned this when I sent out the packet, I will ask for the budget amendments to be pulled in place at the very end of our Township Board meeting, just because there are items in those budget amendments that we're discussing through the meeting, so I don't want to presuppose the approval of those. But Anne, do you want to go over the consent agenda?
Certainly. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have special meeting minutes from June 23rd, 2025, recommend approval. The general fund checks numbers 19575 through 19671 in the amount of $125,924.03. The emergency fund check numbers 5952 through 5985, paid in the amount of $119,425.79. The receiving fund check numbers 2982 through 2985, paid in the amount of $113,252.39. From the escrow fund, check numbers 2090 through 2097, in the amount of $34,924.68. Roads SAD Fund, check number 121, paid in the amount of $500. And there were two payrolls. The first one dated June 1st through June 14th, check number 6938 through 6941 totaled And the payroll dated June 15th through June 28th totaled $87,040.96. Total payroll, $167,840.42. Total amount paid, $561,867.31. There are two board adjustments which will be moved, and there is a foreclosure list as well.
All right, very good, thank you. Would anybody from the board like anything removed from the consent agenda? Would anyone from the public like anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll bring that back to the Township Board for a motion on the consent agenda as presented with the removal of the two budget amendments.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda without the budget amendment.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay, motion by Bartlett, support by Walters. Any further discussion? Anne will do a roll call vote.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
Lyle.
No.
Friend.
Yes. Okay, with that, we will move on to business before the Township Board. We do have Grand Travers County here. I do believe I see Commissioner Henshaw. How are you this evening?
Very good, thank you.
Good, can you bring us up to speed a little bit?
I will do my best. Rob Henshaw, Grand Travers County Commission, serving District 5, which is about half of East Bay Township, my counterpart, Darryl Nelson, chose to spend some time with his mother tonight, so he's not here. I'm happy to cover, he covered the last one. So, actually, I made a little list here. Let me bring up my notes here. So, just recently, Grand Travers County recently settled a case with Pace North, which bought, or now has bought, the old Health Department building, if you remember, on Garfield Road. There was an old county asset there, and then there was some question as to, in 2017, when the documents were made, what was right, what was wrong. So if you have any interest or questions on the Pace North situation, feel free to ask myself or Administrator Alger, I'm happy to bring anyone up to speed. We had some issues at the jail, you may have heard. We have some very aged infrastructure at the county jail, had a stress crack in the floor in the entry area, had engineers come out and look at it, it was not, like, nothing's going to collapse, it's just a stress crack. But it is certainly a constant reminder that we have some aging infrastructure, and we're looking at how to address that best moving forward. And let's see, on June 25th, we had the MSU Extension come and lead a board, kind of a training workshop for being on boards. And of course, I've, you know, like many of you, been on boards for many years, but I still learned some things, and it was really, really great, and I would encourage any board, township, authority, or what have you, to reach out to the MSU Extension if you're interested in a board training. They went through things like personality typing, and what makes a good board, and had a really good discussion there. So that was, I think, a positive thing, especially at the county level, at least. It's increasingly polarized politically. We've got Democrats and Republicans now, and there's a lot of, you know, showboating in election season. So something to kind of bring us back to, hey, we're here to do the work of the people, I think was a very positive experience. On July 9th, we had a study session last week, the prosecutor in courts and community corrections that brought us up to speed on their challenges. The prosecutor, as reported in the news, is looking for some support because the attorneys working in her office are kind of under the pay level of what a typical attorney in this area makes, so she's looking for some help there from the county board come budget time. So we'll have some interesting discussions there. The, another thing we're going to be voting on later this week is the marijuana fund plan. So when Michigan legalized recreational marijuana, part of that package was that whenever there's a facility, they pay a significant tax to the counties itself. And so the question is now what to do with nearly a million dollars a year of revenue? You know, personally, I think, well, we had a lot of tourists generating that revenue, they aren't paying our roads millage. I would love to see some of that go towards roads, and I've said that in the past, and that's been my pot for potholes, kind of, I think it'd be a great use, and I think every one of us would appreciate just a little more roads funding because we would all use it. But that's not what's being proposed to the board on Wednesday. They want to do a grant program. So nonprofits can apply for between $25,000 and $100,000 grants at a time, it'll be reviewed by the board. Personally, I don't support it. If the board does choose it, I will certainly do my best to make sure some of our East Bay nonprofits are pushing for that funding. So there's some, you know, criteria there, even, I think, faith communities are eligible to apply, colleges and universities, EDC, economic development organizations and corporations are eligible to apply. So if that does pass, I'll give you some more information, and hopefully we can get some of that countywide funding coming back to our District 5 area here. The other thing I wanted to mention was Camp Greilich. I know that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So your grant program, would it allow townships to apply for road funding?
No, unfortunately, no. Again, this is not my plan, and I do not support it, but the fact that it's on the agenda tells me there's a good chance it could pass. So I, you know, again, I would much rather just put, we've got some extra funds, let's put into the roads, because we're all going to benefit, there's no question. If we start, you know, we went through COVID, and we had all that federal money come, and it was a nightmare. You know, I did my best as the chairman at the time to, you know, spread that around the county in different areas, the township did receive some for some sewer and water projects, but it was a nightmare. And then the accountability, a county is just not set up to give accountability on a grant funding program. Like, how do you know that taxpayers really got their value? Now sewer and water is pretty simple, you know, obviously, we all, you know, we all use our water in a sewer, and then it keeps our lakes, streams, and, you know, rivers clean by having good infrastructure, but some of those projects were just kind of a nightmare for holding them accountable.
And as they pass or don't pass things, we'll be in touch with Commissioner Henshaw and make sure that we see how either East Bay Township can utilize it, or maybe some of our organizations within the township can.
Yep. So yeah, I'm hugely supportive of roads, and, you know, I'd love to see, you know, actually, when we passed the millage, the road millage passed again, and I kind of wanted to see it raised a little bit, but they went for status quo, so, you know, any extra dollars, let's feed our infrastructure, because that's really more of the purpose of government, not, you know, these specialty programs that are questionable value. So anyway, that's my political speech on that. But I did want to mention Camp Greilich, and I know that's, you know, right here, the heart of East Bay Township, a lot of us have a lot of history there. I was a Boy Scout there, I was a staffer out there, my uncle was the, Cliff Wagner was the Ranger for many years, and my mom's side of the family, all my Eagle Scout uncles, you know, right up through me and my cousins, and we just got a big history there, and I know a lot of people in our county do. So it was great to see that come as a county park. We're being contacted by a few of the lake residents that are concerned, really keeping perspective, they're concerned about a couple of very fine points, and the whole program as a whole is wonderful for the community. There's just a couple of few small things that probably, you'll probably hear about it, they're concerned about the noise on the lake. I remember being one of 300 Boy Scouts camping there, banging on the tables in Besser Hall, and, you know, singing and shouting and chanting as loud as we could. So anyway, that's something, and I ask the whole community to bear with us as we work out those finer points, and the Parks Commission at the county is working to make it best for everyone, and not everyone has the same ideas, and that's always the challenge, and just work through the process, and do our best to listen, and know that it's not set in stone. If, you know, if there's some gatherings out there that we find are disruptive to the community, we can put an end to that. Or if there's not enough availability for gatherings, we can always increase it later incrementally. So just try to keep an open mind and know that it's not set in stone. We did have a work bee out there, of some older scouters went out, and the last couple that got married out there at the chapel bowl came out and cleaned the whole chapel. And I thought that was really neat, that the, you know, people that used it are coming back, they've got, their heartstrings are there, and they're coming out, and they're contributing to the community. So long history Camp Greilich, I'm also Rotarian, so, you know, back to when Rotary put out the camp for the Boy Scouts and for the community, just a great history there, and I hope we all treasure that and remember that as we disagree on small things. We can remember that there is a huge treasure here. Any questions on the county business?
I think, well fundamentally, we're very fortunate and thankful that the county retained it for the public to enjoy in whatever shape, fashion, or form that comes in. So want to remember that. And the other thing is, we will be at your meeting, I believe it's August 20th, because our sewer project is still, our manufacturer engineer's here to talk about that later, but it will be going on, and of course, they would like an update on that designation, that allocation of the ARPA fund, so happy to be there and do that.
Excellent, appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Grand Travers County Road Commission, and Dan Watkins is here. Dan, how are you doing?
Pretty good, so.
Pretty busy these days, huh?
Yeah, definitely. Been sprinting here the last little bit. Just a couple of updates on what we're working on right now. We just finished up doing our crack sealing for the year, and right now, we're doing a lot of the chip sealing projects, you probably see them out there doing the chip seal. Right now, we're doing about 70 miles of chip seal this year. They're in the portion right now where they're actually putting the rock down. They'll be starting tomorrow, they'll start doing the fog seal, and that's actually gives it like a little more of the asphalt look to it, and holds everything down, the rocks won't be flying around as loose. The last project we have docked for chip seal this year will be town line, but we're trying to hold off as long as we can to do town line, wanted that to be last, a little bit closer to when three miles done, because we're hoping that people weren't going to drive on town line a lot, but they are, so it's taking a lot of wear and damage and stuff, so we're going to try to put it back together the best we can. Longline painting's going on right now, watch out for those lines, they can be wet sometimes. We are on them about putting cones down and stuff like that, but I have seen some trails and marks and stuff when we're driving around, so that's always nice. Starting next week, we're going to have a vac truck in town, you're going to see them going around, they're doing all the catch basins, manhole covers, all those, they'll be pulling all those out, getting anything that's down there for material-wise, getting that out. Roadside mowing has been a disaster for us this year, so we have three tractors and mowers, and we cannot keep those on the road this year. We've had so many breakdowns, transmission issues, the mowers, and all of our stuff's pretty new, but this has been one of the worst years we've ever seen, so we're very behind on mowing. We're doing everything we can to get those tractors up and running. We're trying to rent one, we've called everybody that rents equipment like that, we're really having a really hard time. We pulled a mower, I believe it was out of Kentucky, to rent, and it broke down the first week it was here, and they took it back. So it's just been a disaster on mowing.
There are those years sometimes, right?
We're definitely feeling it this year for mowing. Potter Road project, I'm sure everybody probably had a chance to see that, that came out really good, we're really pleased with how fast that road degraded, and how fast we were able to get it engineered, and get it out, and get it back together. And we saw really good pricing, some of the best pricing we have seen in a long time on Potter Road, so hopefully that might be a thing to come. If you get a chance, we have a video posted out there, and there's pictures of it, we actually had trans map pictures of it, in the fall and spring, when you look at the two differences, it's just wild of how fast that road came apart, so hopefully we don't see that again anytime soon, that was kind of a bad deal. Probably the big one everybody wants to know about is the Three Mile project, that is on time, we were kind of hoping maybe we'd be a little bit ahead of schedule, but we're not, we're on time. Right now, they're in front of the conservancy, and that's the area we're mostly concerned about, that has all the mud and muck and nastiness, so they're trying to get that out of there, and they're putting that geotextile down to try to get a base going in there. So it's as bad, the worst case we were worried about, that's what we're running into. So we're still on budget, but we're starting to even get into a little bit of the contingency funds we had there for that, just in case it was a little worse than we thought, and of course, that's what we're finding. But overall, the project's still looking good, we're hoping early August to get Three Mile open back up, and that's probably about the same time we'll try to get Town Line open back up as well. We're going to do that wedge course and that chip seal on Town Line, so it won't be a brand-new road, but hopefully it'll be something a little better than what we had even before the project started. Our old Kingsley Building, I know we built that new building last year, we did sell the old building, so that was good news, sold it to a local business down there, so it's going to save a good part of the community, and we're hoping to put those funds back into roads, is what we're looking at doing. Another thing that we went out for bid for, and you'll probably see that starting here pretty soon, is we did a countywide car count. We've never done this before, usually they hire interns, and they did a couple roads a year, and we never really had a good idea. I'll go and look at roads, somebody will ask me about it, like, oh, the last time we had data, it was 2010, or even farther back than that, 1998, we'll say. So to actually get an idea of like where traffic is, where it's flowing, it's kind of the next stage in getting like a whole asset management plan together. We have a good idea of what our road system looks like, but we don't know how much traffic's actually traveled in it. And we need to take a look at, is there roads that are primaries that shouldn't be primaries, or roads that are locals that maybe should be primaries, and different things like that. So really excited for that, that's going to be probably, by the end of the summer, we should have an idea of all of our roads in Grand Travers County, what our car counts are, so it's really going to help us build an asset management plan. Based off of that data, and what we already had, when we did the, we drove every road and measured every crack, we're going to try to put a five-year plan together, which might be a little ambitious for roads, because things change so much, but we're going to try to get a rough five-year plan together, at least get a couple of years where the road system's built, like projects on the shelf, instead of just this constant trying to figure out what road we're doing next, so we're really trying to get ahead of the ball. So that's the goal, that's the big thing that we're working on right now. The last thing I was going to talk about a little bit was the MS4 program, now we're a metropolitan area, we have to, all the waters of the state where they come off of roads, culvers, different things like that, we have to say where they're going. So what we did is we hired OHM, and they're currently working on that plan for us, so that's all I have for tonight, of course, anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Well, thank you, appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to our financial review, which includes the 2024 audit, so Will, you're up, how are you doing?
I'm good, you?
Good, nice to see you. And this, the audit is in your packet, and then you also have the copies similar to what Will has there, too.
Yeah, we're going to spend most of our time in this little document here with the pretty colors on the cover here. Rather thick document, thankfully, I will not be going through each page of this tonight, for the sake of, I don't want to put the board to sleep, my first time in front of you. Okay, this is, like I said, we're starting with the financial statements. My name is Will Love, I work for Raymond, I'm the manager, was the manager on the job, which means I oversaw field work, made sure things got done in a timely manner. These are the easiest presentations to do, to be honest with you, because before we even get there, I want to let you know, I'm presenting to you a very clean audit. So I want to, don't want to be, no use any suspense, it's an audit presentation, not a drama. So basically, what I'm going to do is we're going to walk through these, we're looking at some overview of the financial statements. It's important to remember that even though we put it in the packet in this, you know, this kind of little document here for you, almost all the information in here is the responsibility of management. And the book, all comes from the books and records kept by management throughout the year. There are two reports in this document that we are responsible for as auditors, and frankly, what you pay us to give you. And I'm going to focus mostly on those, but we'll take an overlook of the layout of the financial statements, maybe touch on a couple of numbers. The important thing to remember is these numbers are from December 31st of 2024, so yeah, here we are in July, you guys are way beyond any of these numbers, you've discussed new numbers that are probably more relevant to what you're doing this week than these numbers are going to be. So I said, I'll touch on a few of them, but mostly what I want to focus on is the process of the audit, how did it go, what were the results of the audit? So in that spirit, if we turn right past the table of contents to page one, this is the independent auditor's report, and it's a good solid three pages of, four pages now, man, this thing keeps getting longer. Four pages of a lot of explanatory detail, what you really want to know is what's in paragraph two, where it says, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, aggregate remaining fund information as of December 31st, 2024." That is what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion, it's the best opinion we can give to a set of financial statements. Now, there's another report, and if you look at the back of this report, about three pages on here, on the last page of the audit report, on page four, it talks about, "In accordance with government auditing standards, we've also issued our report dated June 23rd on our consideration of the township's internal control over financial reporting and on test of its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements and other matters." That's the second report that we'll get to in a minute, that's a little different focus. This really focuses on the finished financial statements. This is saying that the financial statements as presented in this document are fairly presented, can be relied upon, the numbers can be viewed as accurate in all material respects. The focus of the second report is going to be a little bit different, and I'll talk about that when we get to it. Now, just kind of moving through the content of the report, if we look on page 17 and continuing on to 18 and 19, you'll notice that there are two separate sets of financial statements here. The first set is here on page, starting on page 17, and they are what are called the government-wide financial statements, they're really a high-level focus view of the township as a whole versus funds, which is the way you guys budget, and the way you guys look at your financial data on a month-to-month basis. This is focused on activities, and you'll notice that it's broken out between governmental activities and business-type activities. Governmental activities is about 75% of what you do on a month-to-month basis, the rest of it, the business-type activities, are the other types of activities, the sewer and the water fund, basically, is what makes up the business-type activity. Split here a little bit different. The other thing you'll notice that's different from when we look at the fund statements is you've got items that are considered long-term in nature, your investment in your joint venture, your capital assets, bonds, notes, and other long-term liabilities, those kind of things, the balances of, you don't necessarily enter into the budget and how you look at the financial statements on a month-to-month basis, you look at it more from an activity standpoint. How much are we going to pay on our debt this year? How much are we going to invest in capital assets this year? So that, this is a little more high, high-level view. The stated purpose of these financial statements is really for the users of the financial statements, that being the board, management, and also the general public, whoever might be interested in this, should be able to look at these and compare them to similar documents in a similar size township, and be able to make some type of financial judgment as to how you're doing in comparison to someplace else. Because there's a lot of, obviously, numbers are numbers, and you would have to have some knowledge of both governments in order to make that kind of judgment, but that's the real reason for these, as stated by the Gatsby, anyway. If we move on to page, yeah, let's flip forward to page 20 now, and let's take a look at the fund statements. That's the second part of this now, are your fund financial statements. Now, those of you who are familiar with governmental accounting know that the day-to-day, month-to-month accounting is done via funds. The general fund covers almost everything except for all items that are required to be, or want to be tracked in a different fund. So you've got, you've got like, you've got three major funds here, your general fund, your emergency services, and municipal streets, capital projects fund, and then all the other little funds, the non-major funds, are captured here in this final column. Now, if you've got a small fund that you don't see here, that you're interested in, you will find that in the back after the notes, there are combining statements that will allow you to see that kind of detail. The facing page on 21 is important because, remember, we talked about the government-wide financial statements being different in perspective. What this does is this reconciles your fund statement on the previous page to the government-wide statements that we looked at previously on page 17. So then page 22 and 23, the same thing, only the activity, this shows you your fund activity for the year. You can see that this just shows you how the fund balance changed over the year. One statement I would point out, that we probably should look at, I'll tease it a little bit in detail, would be the budget-to-actual statement on page 24. That's for the general fund, there are also budget and actual statements for the emergency services fund afterwards. But just to kind of take a look at the general fund and see the way we did budget-wise, a pretty stellar job budget-wise, as far as, I mean, everything came pretty much under budget, a little thousand-dollar glitch in the planning and zoning administrator's section. But I mean, as you guys know, budgeting is oftentimes throwing a dart at a dartboard, so it can be. So a good job of budgeting here. You'll see over on page 25, the net change in fund balance, you originally planned getting the fund balance by about $585,000, actually only got in there about $77,000. Leaves you a final fund balance of Leaves you, leaves you a final fund balance of, of, of a little over 4.8 million. Okay. Following the governmental statements, now the, the other funds that you have are, like we said earlier, your business-type activities or what we call proprietary funds. And those we start on page 27. And you'll see the, the balance sheet, and then following on page 28 would be your income statement, and then the statement of cash flows on page 29. Uh, you can see that the, the sewer fund and water fund came in, it just, sewer fund came in net position a little bit shy of 15 million, where your water suit, water's just a little bit over 13 million, both of them pretty healthy fund balances. Page 28 shows you the activity. What's important, I think, to gather on page 28 is that your operating income is healthy. You mean, which means your, your fee, your user fees are enough to cover your operating costs on a yearly basis. I, I've seen that in several situations where it's not like that, where they have to support the water and sewer fund sometimes with transfers from, um, from other funds, sometimes the general fund. So there's, again, you seem to be operating at a pretty healthy, uh, pretty healthy clip. Uh, 29 is the cash flow statement, kind of an odd statement. What it does is it takes your operating act, your operating, um, income, and it kind of converts it into what happened with the cash balance. Again, this is what we made, this is what the fund balance changed by, this is what the net position changed by, but what happened related to the cash? And, and here, you're, you're pretty much on the same level here. You're not, I'm not seeing any, anything strange here. Uh, it's a good statement to review, not, not, some people find it very useful, not, some people do not. Okay. The following couple of pages is, uh, some statements on your custodial fund or your, your tax, uh, your tax fund. Really all I'm going to touch on number-wise, the, uh, the notes are pretty standard. Again, after the notes, you'll find your combining statements, so if you've got a small fund that's presented as a non-major. So with that, let's shoot all the way to page 65 and talk about the second part of our, of the reports that, that we as auditors are responsible for. This report is, has a rather long title, but really is a report on internal control over financial reporting, and also on compliance and other matters related to the financial statements. What, what you're going to see here, or what you could see here, this would be our chance to let you know if we found anything that was A, material, or we felt were significant deficiencies related to the internal control system. Happy to report there's none of that here. Now, it also says, if we look at the bottom of page 65 here, it says, "However, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies may exist that were not identified." Understand that as auditors, we have to obtain an understanding of your internal control system in order to design our audit procedures. That doesn't mean that we're testing every aspect of it. So are there certain things that could, that could exist in your internal control system that we didn't necessarily look at? Yes, there's always a risk of that because of the limits of the audit process, something you need to understand. But from our, from our, our understanding of it, and from the, from the, from the things that we've been discussions with management and are looking at transactions, we didn't notice anything material or significant. And that's consistent with prior years. That's, I don't, I don't think we've, we've, we've reported a material weakness or a significant deficiency either in prior years. If we look over at page 66, then it's the second half of this, and that's the report on compliance and other matters. And this is where we would, as, as part of our audit, we do look at certain contractual arrangements, and so we do look to see if there are any non-compliance issues. And this is where, this here at page 66 is where we would report to you anything that we felt, any non-compliance issues that we felt were going to be material to the financial statement. Again, it says here that our, the top results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance and other, or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. So a fully clean, um, uh, government auditing standards report. Any questions? Anything I flew by that you wanted to go back and discuss a little bit more?
Sure. Glenn?
Page 44.
Page 44. There we go. Okay.
Okay. It talks about Michigan class and almost $13 million in it. But it seems like unless I dreamt something, the report that I got sent across the computer said that that's not insured. And I guess my question is, if it isn't insured, is there a way to buy a policy to protect us? This doesn't talk about not being insured, but the one that I got on my packet across the computer said that it was not insured.
Generally, yeah, generally those types of investments would not, would not be, because it says here, they're investing in U.S. Treasury obligations, federal agency deposits, repurchase agreement. Those types of things would not be covered by FDIC.
Okay. But then my second question is, is there, to your knowledge, some way to buy a insurance policy? Because I'm looking at this plainly. If something happened to Michigan class, and I know they say it probably never will, but if it did, we would be all, what, $13 million?
Well, I think one of the things that you can do, because that would be really bound the scope of the audit, is that, um, you know...
Certainly something I can look into.
Yeah. I was going to say...
I'm not sure that I know the answer to that.
Share that information with Tracy. She can talk about it with Michigan class. And as well, we can also, um, utilize either our, um, accounting firm, our auditing firm, or even Benzinsky and Company, which is financial management, um, that we're utilizing for the sewers.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if you guys were aware of this. I, it was in the packet that got sent to us, but it's not in this packet. And I guess I'm not sure why there's a difference in the reports that we get.
Well, because we would talk about the FDIC coverage, and I think it's given that any type of investment outside of a, of an actual cash deposit is not covered by FDIC insurance. That's what we're required to disclose, you're required to disclose that. But it gets assumed here, yeah, it's assumed here that you would not, um, now, what is it, what does it say here? Collateral? No, okay. This just says what, what they are. It does not say if there's any, and I'm not sure if your commercial insurance would cover a loss like that or not. I would think not. I would, I would, I would think not.
However...
And you buy an insurance policy, that's, that's another question altogether on.
And it seems it is, it is invested in, um, um, a high-grade, high-grade investments.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, all of these, all of these, the U.S. Treasury obligations, federal agency obligations, were classed to go belly up? I don't know how they would. Yeah, I don't, I, I guess, I guess that depends on how their operation of them not...
And it's collateralized at 102%.
Huh?
It's collateralized at 102%. So it's over collateralized, those investments.
Well, what I think we're saying here is the repurchase agreements are collateralized by the other government, of the treasuries and agencies.
And do a presentation, or I can send you documentation of their investments.
Well, yeah, I don't need that. My concern was when I read it in the report, it said it's not insured. And I thought, what do you do in that case? I mean, it's a big chunk of money. You can't go to the bank and get, uh, insurance on it through the... So my concern was, is when I see something like that, if it says not insured, the first thing I think of, what do you do? Because I don't know. But I would think that there should be somebody that could insure that.
I don't know that there is, but we can certainly follow up with those resources.
The, the other thought is, if you're investing in U.S. Treasuries and Agencies, for them to go belly up, those would have to be worthless. I think at that point, there's bigger problems than, than, uh...
Okay.
Thank you. At that point, we're, we're probably in economic chaos, so... But I, but I will pose the question.
Yes.
I will do that. Any other questions?
Other questions? We'll get, we'll get further information for you, Glenn.
Let's start quick about this, the other, the letter that, that's in here. Nope, that's the cover letter. There's, there's a, a little report in here in the form of a letter, commonly referred to the management letter, but it's actually a letter to the board. The letter, it's a letter to those charged with governance. And basically, this is our way of summing up in about six, seven, eight pages here, how did the audit go? And what it really gives you is a lot of negative assurance. In other words, if, if, if something went wrong with the audit process, we would have to tell you about it. We would tell you about it. Nothing in here would indicate that that, that that's the case. One thing I would point out on page one, there's a little paragraph at the very bottom that says, "We have provided our findings regarding internal control over financial reporting and compliance noted during our audit in a separate letter to you dated July, June 23rd, 2025." That, which makes it sound like there are findings to be found, but there are not. This is simply a reference to that Yellow Book report, or that government auditing standards report that we just looked at that was clean. This is, this is what the, the, the powers that be have decided they want, this is the way this should be worded. But I, I was always concerned that some people read that and go, well, wait a minute, I thought we didn't have any findings. So if this is not indicative of any findings, it's just referencing you to that report. The rest of this thing is completely clean. This is a lot of, this is what we get to tell you about if we had any disagreements with management, if, uh, yeah, what else? If there were any, um, any major difficulties with getting the audit completed. I've got none of that. The only thing, the only thing referenced is here is the schedule of past adjustments, and we'll take a quick look at that in just a second. But yeah, like I said, right, I would urge you to read the letter, and so you, so that you know, you know, what, what, what's happened with the audit. But there's nothing in there that's going to cause you any concern. About, uh, five, six pages in, maybe five, there's attachment A, uh, that lists some upcoming changes in accounting standards. Again, I would urge you to read this, look at this. I don't think many of these are going to affect you, uh, in a material way, but I guess we'll know, we'll know more as, as, as these get implemented and, and, uh... I, I, I said that before, and then we get, we finally get the final limitation, implementation of the standard, and it turns out to be a lot more complicated than what we thought it was. Um, one thing, yeah, that's, that is one thing I would point out. On part of the, it's one page of the, like, the second page of the letter, it talks about the implementation of Gatsby 101 on compensated absences. You did implement that this year, but it did not have a significant effect on the financial statements. And we'll touch on that a little bit when we get to the schedule of past adjustments. After attachment A is the representation letter that management signs for us at the end of the audit. Basically, it's a letter that they give us every year that tells us that, you know, when we asked them a question, they told us the truth. When we asked for a report, they gave us the correct one, that kind of thing. So it's, again, I would, I would urge that you read it so that you know what management has to agree to, but, uh, nothing in there that's going to, that's going to cause any concern. On the very last page of the document is an item called the Schedule of Adjustments Past, or what we refer to as the SOAP. Most of this, you'll see, are 2023 past adjustments that were corrected during the year. So they, and they had, they had an effect on beginning, they would have had an effect on beginning equity, so I had to include them here, but those will go away next year. The last one here where it says unrecorded compensated absences. As I said, you guys implemented Gatsby 101 this year. We worked with Steve and Adam at, at Mayfair, trying, getting the, uh, the calculation done for what the compensated, what the amount of compensated absence liability was. At the end of the day, it was determined it really wasn't material. So what we did is rather than, rather than pu, push it through the financial statements, we decided that it would be better just, so you can see what the amounts are, um, putting it on the scheduled past adjustment. Probably is going to recur every year. So we may discuss going forward whether we want to, uh, put it out, put it on the books, but for the time being, it was, it was kind of a, went back and forth a little bit, and it ended up a little bit later on than we wanted to. And, and I, I thought rather than put you guys through after having to test the thing for such a small amount, we just put it on the SOAP. So we'll work with Beth and, and with the rest of management, we'll determine whether we want to put it on the, on the books next year, maybe. But that's it. Again, these are all immaterial, and we, but because they fall above a threshold that we consider completely trivial, we want to make sure that you're aware that they existed.
Okay. Very good. Questions?
Any questions?
All right. Those mics are staticky a little bit. Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for, for having me.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
And thank you to Beth and, and Sue and Tracy, and, and it's really a pleasure working with you all as well.
Oh, sure. That would be terrific. That would be terrific. And then we have Steve here, who will, um, uh, help us walk through. We really as well have to thank Raymond, as well as Manor Custerison, who does a lot of our, uh, pre-audit prep work. So it makes it a little bit easier when Raymond gets here. So you work with us on a monthly basis for reconciliation, and then when things come up and, you know, how do we record certain, um, maybe particular things or whatever, Manor Custerison can help us with that. And this year, we have something going on where it's, it's, the best explanation is no good deed goes unpunished, right? So if you want to, um, take it from there.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so in your, in your packet, your 400 pages or whatever, I, I found it. I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it before, and then I think it wasn't downloading.
Steve found it. He's like, it's not in there.
And I'm like, it's, I don't see it. And then, uh, so, um...
Like, it is.
So if you have it printed, I don't know how you're going to find it, but it's right after the audit.
Page 141.
If it's, yeah, it's 141 through 144, if you're looking at the PDF. So, um, so yeah, as, as Beth said, um, what ends up happening in the audited financial statements is four funds. And I'll just give you the fund numbers. Tracy's going to know the names. It's, it's, there's some 800 funds, which are your special assessment funds. I know Huntington Woods is one of them. I'm not sure the rest of the names of the...
Holiday Woods, uh, Canterbury, English Woods, and Timber Hill.
Okay. So those funds. So those get combined all together in the audited financial statements, and they're presented as one column of the financial statements, like Will talked about, as a major fund called your municipal street funds. So those all get combined together, presented in there. And as you know, the special assessments, um, you do the work and then you levy them 10 years, 15 years, however, usually 10, I think, however, 15, however many years those are, are spread out for the taxpayers to then reimburse the, the township for those. So you had a real, you know, the big project in 2024 was Holiday Woods, um, close to 300,000, I think it was like 285, something like that. You funded that project because your general fund is healthy. You funded that project through a, a general fund loan, or what, what we call in the accounting profession, an advance. So that advance from the general fund to the Holiday Woods fund, um, shows up on your balance sheet in that fund because it's an inter-fund loan. But all of the activity, all the expense, shows up on your revenue and expense statement. So you've got a, kind of a mismatch of where the revenue came, or the money came from and how you spend it. So, you know, it's a lot of accounting, accounting nerd talk, but, but that's basically the, the concept is, is the matching of where the dollars came from and how the dollars were expended, um, resulted in, and because it was a big project, 285,000, um, it caused that fund to be in a deficit. So what Treasury does, you know, as, as Will said, you know, the audit was completed, the audit gets submitted to Treasury. Instantly, a letter comes out from Treasury that says, hey, you've got a fund in a deficit. A little bit unique, again, it's more of an accounting issue, an accounting presentation. So in that packet, that 141 through 144, um, I think the very first couple pages are the letter from Treasury that basically says, hey, you've got this fund in a deficit. How are you going to fix it? And then the next one is, uh, I think that letter that, that we put together, that Beth will need, run on letterhead, and, and Beth will need to sign. And then the last page is the actual deficit elimination plan, the D E P. So, um, looking at that, I mean, basically, the fund, if you look at that deficit elimination plan, it had a roughly $70,000 deficit at the end of December 31st, 2024. With two years of normal activity, Treasury allows you to, um, recuperate that or, or recover that over five years, and you're able to basically, just on normal operations, do it over two years. So as, as it shows there, normal special assessment revenue coming in in '25 and '26, some interest revenue, um, and then really no projects, no additional projects, just the debt payments being made. We'll get that fund out of a deficit, um, at the end of 2026, is anticipated. And, and so they'll require you to file something every year, so at the end of next year, we'll file another one, as long as it stays on pace with, with what the expectations are. There won't be any, you know, additional filings that you'll have to do as long as, you know, as long as you continue to progress, and then at the end of 2026, hopefully it'll be out of a deficit and resolve itself. But, I mean, so it's kind of, you know, like, like Beth said, it's no, no good deed goes unpunished, because if you would have borrowed the funds from outside, and you would have borrowed them from the bank, you'd have paid more interest, you'd have paid interest to not yourself, and it would have been okay, because all of that would have hit the revenue and expense statement.
Not to mention the bond attorney, the, the fees for the financial. I mean, you're really saving the residents quite a bit if we have that financial availability to do this. So as, just for anyone who's listening, you know, when we do SAD, this board knows, we either fund it through a bond, which incurs those additional costs, and they're tens of thousands of dollars, or we can self-fund it through a loan. So with the self-fund, this was low enough, we could do it, we did it, and that's what happens. And the second thing to note is, we're not the only township dealing with this and having to do this. There is another one in Grand Traverse County this year as well.
Yeah, so, so, but I mean, it's a matter of, you know, running that letterhead, running that letter on letterhead, signing it, and you will have to, as a board, has to take action on that, that, I wasn't sure I laid it out as best I could for the resolution, if that.
We can do it as a, as a resolution, and we'll begin resolutions with number 14. So while this will be on the different letterhead, our traditional format, it will still say all of the same information. So this would be Resolution 2025-14, and we would need approval of that resolution, and as well as the letter from the supervisor regarding the resolution. Are there any questions for Steve regarding this?
Is there a way to get around this? I mean, if we do another SAD in the next two years, isn't this just going to blow up even bigger and cause problems in it?
Part of it, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, part of it was, we had done a couple last year, and our fund balance was large, was enough to cover those last year, but this one was larger, and we didn't have enough fund balance.
And she's not talking 101 fund balance, she's talking the road.
Yeah, the road fund balance. And it just happened to hit this year.
Yeah, you had two, I think, two back-to-back, and, and the volume or the dollar amounts of those caused, caused it to fall.
Yeah. It just was kind of like a perfect storm, kind of thing.
So do we need to move fund balance into the road so that?
Well, you'd have to transfer it, again, accounting speak, but you'd have to transfer it and with the expectation of not getting it back, and you'd always want it to come back to the general.
There's nothing.
There's nothing really wrong with it?
There's nothing really wrong with this. No. It sounds not great, because it says Debt Elimination Plan, but when you understand the source and the fund that you're talking about, and it makes a lot of sense, it's a kind of a quirky accounting thing. What hits the balance sheet, what hits the expenses and the revenue expense side. So, and there's always, I mean, they did a lot, a lot of work on this, you know, making sure that it was shown in the best way possible, and I'm pretty sure, you know, people will continually be talking about this too, because, as I said, there's another township that is going through the same thing and having to file the same thing.
Because they're able to self-fund special assessments.
Yeah. So.
So we're talking, I mean, this was, is it me?
No, I think it's.
Yeah, I think it is. So we're talking about potentially self-funding a portion of the sewer project. Is that going to hit this?
No, 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 that's, that's in the sewer fund. So that's in the 590 fund, and we have plenty of fund balance in that. This is just something, we don't keep fund balance in. Normally, you get it in from like a bond, and you record that cash coming in, and you've got that in there and, you know.
It's a timing thing, too, because you do the work, then you collect it over 15 years, you know? So that's kind of just the, just the mismatch of, of when the money goes out compared to when it comes back.
Okay. I was just trying to make it so that somebody didn't have to fill this stuff out.
Yeah, no, definitely.
Trust me, we, we keep it all the way.
If there's, is there, are there other questions, or is there a motion for Resolution 2025-14, and as well authorization for the letter presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made by Walters and seconded by M. Cortade. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call, Anne.
Walters.
Yes.
M. Cortade.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Myle.
Yes.
Friend.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And as well, we, we do have in here, we won't spend much time on it, because we do have a lot on our agenda, but we do have the revenue expense so far as through this year, through June 30th is when I looked at, because that's the last completed month. But there really wasn't anything in particular in here that caused any point of alarm. You can see where I highlighted kind of the percentages that we're going through this year. The only ones that was like, wow, we need to adjust this, those are taken care of with the potential, with the, thank you, well, with the budget amendments, so.
What about the trail study?
That's on the, that's in the budget amendment, yep. Yep. All right. Thank, thank you.
If you send both of those to me, I can upload them to Treasury.
Okay, that sounds great. Appreciate it.
Not much.
A week?
Yeah.
A week or two.
Yeah, we'll get it to you this week.
Great.
Sounds good. Thanks a lot, Steve. Okay, with that, we'll move on to engineering projects, and we do have Wade Trim here, we have Joe Slonecki, who is here, who's going to kind of bring us up to date on where we're at with that lift station one. And I do, before you get started, I just want to update them on the contract as far as the proportion of how we're breaking out the costs. This board will remember that we have a 2013 agreement with Acme Township and East Bay Township that defines how we break out the costs of those projects. As we looked at it in detail, there's, there's some.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Did you hear?
No, they're next.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay. So with, oh, right, back to the Acme, that's okay. The Acme and the East Bay, it's broken out in, it was flows, and then REUs, and then says approved REUs, but you have to take that in context, and there's about three places where we could substantiate that there's approved REUs. And actually, Noah Garberg is here. Noah, how are you? Come on up for a second, if you would. And one of those places is obviously Planning Commission, but it's a little bit, it's not as direct, right? Because you don't approve REUs, you approve a development, so to speak. Another place is with Eagle. Every time we do a project with Eagle, we have to put the REUs in. Again, sometimes with both of those, they get built, sometimes they don't. One place where the attorney recommends that we do it is the REUs with the approved REUs through DPW, because we know they're getting pretty close at actually coming to fruition. And so we're working with Noah to, as you know, Noah is new and with us in the past two, three months now.
I'm wrapping up, wrapping up the third month.
Okay, very good. And he's doing a great job for us over at DPW, and doing a lot of, if I can, nerding out on data and what they collect and all of that. So he's going to be taking a look at that for us, and we should have that breakout, we're hoping, knock on wood, by the joint meeting on July 29th. So that will help with, it's on your agenda, is the financing agreement. We just had a couple links when you go into that financing agreement, and one of them was the percentages for the townships, and that we're getting done and filled out, and we'll be good to go with that financing agreement, presenting it at the joint meeting. And Noah, I think you're going to be at the joint meeting too, right?
Correct.
Okay, great, great. With that, I'll, didn't mean to drag you up here, I just didn't want to reference you and them, you know, not see you back behind that podium, so.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Joe, if you want to go off on explaining and updating on the engineering part, that'd be great.
Yeah, so today was actually kind of a busy day for this project. We've gotten through our final edits, and those are the plans that you have before you, if you want to look through them, don't have to do it right now. But we got to a point where we're comfortable with moving forward with the project and getting this thing out to bid. We've had several meetings with Acme Township's engineer, and feel like they're in a good spot. We're going to give these to them for one last look over by Acme Township and see where things go. Talking, it's been a long road for the permit from Eagle, that was turned in, I think, back at the beginning of January.
I think it was before that even.
Yeah, maybe December. I can't remember exactly. Anyway, had several back and forths with them. They, they're very touchy about these dual systems where there's networked force mains, and had a lot of questions, ended up having to do a lot of hydraulic modeling to show them that it's going to function the way it does right now, if not better. So, but we, this morning, after talking about it, about 30 minutes later, we got the permit. So that's all done. So Eagle's permitted the force main, and everything's all good with the permitting side of things. Once, once Acme's looked at them, we're going to hand these out to the Grand Traverse County Road Commission, give them to the DPW to look at, have another review with the city of Traverse City for them to look at, because there's some right-of-way permitting from them, and get them to TART so they know what to expect along the trail. There's just a few spots where some bore pits will have to be placed, and it's going to affect the trail temporarily, but not, not a tremendous amount of it from the existing plan. Lots of feedback from the partners who are working on this project. So one thing we are doing is, I know, we still feel that the best way to install this is directional drilling. It just saves a lot of work, but we didn't want to only go with directional drilling operations, because it is a large force main, and there's only one contractor in the northern Michigan area that we know of that can pull an 18-inch pipe. So, and there's several downstate, but we're going to put an alternate bid for PVC pipe and a direct bary trenching operation, just to make sure that you're getting the best cost for the project, and the, you know, who's available for the project, because it is a larger, longer project. But we just want to get a feel for the bidding and what that looks like. Feel that directional drill's still going to be cheaper, the proofs when the bids come back. Other than that, oh, contract documents. Those were reviewed by the township attorney for compliance with the EPA. The EPA has looked at the contracts, gave us comments, had one comment on Buy America or American Iron and Steel, slightly different programs, two different sources of funds coming in from this, that federal funds, they both use different language, so we cleaned that up to their liking, and they, they were happy with the contract. So next step is to finalize the work plan with the EPA, and that, that should be done or will be done before the joint meeting.
And that's the million-dollar federal designation that we're utilizing.
Yep. So the plan is to have the contract, both contracts out to bid prior to the joint meeting.
They won't, obviously, it'll take a while, they won't be in before the joint meeting, and we, we don't want them in before the joint meeting anyway. And we have some information to go over with Acme Township and those, those financing agreements with them as well. And talk, talk to them a little bit about what you had mentioned to me, is while the contract, while the bid is let, you have some opportunities for some questions and so forth, and to amend if you need, if need be.
Yeah, you know, a three-mile-long force main project right through the middle of Traverse City. We've done our best for constructability and making sure that all our bore pits and the railroad crossings and where we're putting the jack and bore and the receiving pits all line up with the existing utilities. We don't anticipate any utility conflicts. We've designed around everything out there, but we do anticipate questions from contractors on this one. So if there's anything that pops up that requires a design change during the bidding process, we'll just issue an addendum and take care of it.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for Joe? Okay, well, thank you for being here. Thanks for the work on this, and we look forward to seeing you on the 29th.
Yes, I will be there.
All right, fantastic.
Right.
Okay, with that, we'll go to the Parks Commission update, and we have Cory Leighton and Ally Hetmer here, and Sam has provided the overview, it's a two-page overview. Do you have that with you, or would you like?
We've got it.
You've got it? Great. So nice to have you here.
Good evening. Well, we've been busy, as usual. Wouldn't think that managing just a few properties would take so much. So one of the highlights that we did recently was the Parks Tour, which I unfortunately was not there for, but Cory was there.
I was there. Parks Tour, we didn't have as many parks as usual. We hit Arbutus Number Five, Grace, Gents, and Pine Grove. Arbutus Number Five, insanely popular. There's always people there. We've been going in the evenings to swim, and there's always people. Put the Ladder End at the dock, it's a huge hit. The park is a hit. And parking, I've noticed, there's not a lot of parking, and some people are still parking on the road when it's super busy, but I'm there a lot, and there's like a flow. It seems to be, because me and the girls have system, and we're like, we're on the way to the park, it's like, think park, think park, think parking. But it's always like someone's pulling out, someone's pulling in, so I think people are, it gets tight, it gets full, but I've seen good parking spot. We're, we're talking about Phase Two, no real plans, but it's definitely, it keeps getting brought up, it doesn't go very far, but we got a lot on our plate. So we do want to do the Phase Two, which is like an improved place structure. Grace McDonald.
We just got a new RFP last month that combines, we had a cornhole game set plan that included a couple different options for a set of like two or six cornhole playing, I get that out of field, but I don't know, areas. And then we did also recently receive a 2% grant from the band, and so we were hoping to use those funds to revitalize the pavilion area, get a fire pit going, just kind of make that more user-friendly, and maybe hopefully sort of start working towards that space being more like multipurpose or being able to use it more year-round. So the new RFP combines two of those projects, the original cornhole project with the fire pit.
And ADA accessibility.
And ADA accessibility, you mustn't forget that. It's to kind of like save money and get all those projects going at once, so that was really exciting to see.
We struck out on building the warming hut. We went after that warming hut for quite a few years, and we never got a grant, and so we're fortunate now that we're looking at the ADA pathways. It would start all the way at the pickleball. Right now, it's gravel, it's still ADA, but it's gravel. So we want to pave, make the ADA to the cornhole.
Down through the cornholes and around. Yeah.
Beef up the, to make it more year-round. Because as everybody knows, also extremely popular, people there all the time, seasonally, not seasonally, year-round.
And when you mention, when you mention fire pit, just so people know, we're talking about a gas and enclosed area that's on a timer, so it's safe. You'll see a lot of them at hotels and restaurants and that sort of thing. And then making the pavilion an area where you can get some buffering from the wind and so forth. The Conservation District has an excellent example, as a matter of fact, where we got our idea from, over on their property, right off of Cass?
Cass. So anyway, so more, more to come on that. We also have requests out for, yep, some architectural firm for, we decided to take that sports field there on the far side of Grace into a dog park. There's a lot of infrastructure already in place that will make that an easy transition. It's something the community has been looking for, for a while, so we're really excited about that project as well. And also at Grace McDonald, on August 7th, we'll be having our community game night. So if you would like to join Parks Commission, we will be there with some fun yard games and snacks. Everyone, please come, that's great. And they did a little mini version of it, I think, at the farmer's market last week. Yeah. The farmer's market is also really doing well in its second season. I went, and it was great.
We'll circle back to that.
We have a new Power of Produce program that we received funding from Groundwork Center for Resilient Communities to put that in place. That's a really cool program that gets kids involved in, you know, learning about produce, and there's some fun activities and homework and a little prize at the end of the season. So that's really exciting. Seeds has signed on as our market manager for the year, and my understanding is that that's been a really positive relationship so far.
The Food Advisory Committee meets a week from Wednesday. We're going to discuss more marketing for the farmer's market. And Sam said that the games night went well.
Great, yeah. And then we also recently, we have had some property use surveys out, we recently received We recently received the basic report for Pine Grove survey and that was, it was good to see that we were kind of, our, you know, plans for the park aligned with what the community wants from it. So, we noticed that most of the folks that use that park are hypo-local. They live in the Pine Grove neighborhood. They're going there with their families, either, you know, daily or weekly or just pretty frequently. So, that was great to see. And we are wanting to, again, replace some of the place structures there, they're a little out of date, and add some picnic tables. That was a big request from the community. And then, the court that's there replaced the basketball groups. I don't think they have nets or they didn't at that time. And then, it just kind of take a look at turning that into a multi-use space and maybe like painting some lines to allow for multiple different sports because that was something a lot of people, you know, want to be able to use it for different things.
There were some improvements we've been asking for, for about three seasons now. And when we did our tour, they were there. So, we were happy to see that. There's a ramp. There's like a foot step up to get into one of the place structures and we've been asking for a ramp and that was there.
Yeah, that was, that was a good outcome of last year's Parks Tour. It was, yeah, getting everyone, just enhancing the access for those with limited mobility into the place structures. That was really good. And then, also, Sam helped put together a little bit of, it's kind of like a one-to-three, three-to-five, and five-to-10-year plan for that park. So, it was really great to see kind of what could be both short-term and long-term. And I believe next week, a week from today, we'll be receiving a similar report for Holiday Woodlands.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I'm very excited to see. Yeah.
Jen's, we went to Jen's. As you saw in the report, Jen's is on yours, pulled up the Poise and Ivy, have a plan to eradicate that over the next few months or years and then.
The bench swing is going and it is scheduled to be shipped on August 15th and should be coming in about five to 10 days after that. And Bash Excavating is going to be installing it.
I was at Jen's on the 4th of July and it was great. I saw, I counted at least like 12 to 15 different parties using the space and that was really awesome to see. And it still didn't feel overcrowded. So, people are using it and they're enjoying it and yeah.
That's great.
Yeah. I think that's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions?
You guys, on your cornhole, is that gonna be like concrete or is that gonna be wood?
It'll be concrete. So, it'll be a different pattern of stamped concrete, kind of showing like how to, like how the court is laid out.
Okay.
We have tournament, tournament goals. We're looking to just start hosting cornhole tournaments in the future.
And so, the Parks Commission, correct me if I'm wrong ladies, but they originally determined, well, there was like a two-game or a six-game, right? So, an additional four games. And they said, well, the difference in price, we're just gonna go with the two games and we'll check on the four games later. And Wade Trim, landscape architect, suggested, go ahead and go out for the RFP for the two games and give the option of the four games and let's see if what we said is the engineering estimate is close to that accurate difference or maybe it's smaller and maybe you might choose to do all six. If you do all six, it's set up for a tournament already. If they go with the two, it will just be grass and irrigation in the other area. So, you could bring boards and set them up as well or just have a nice grassy area for people to enjoy too.
I would, I would bet that if you had just two, they're gonna be full all the time. People's gonna be standing waiting to build a play.
But that's why we left space so you could bring your own.
Yeah. And too, it was, it was pretty pricey to do all six at once. So, part of our plan was to hopefully look into getting some grant funding to assist with that so that we don't have to bear the full financial burden of that.
Thank you.
I'll just let the board know because there was a cost incurred too. And we did have, the winter had a lot of freeze thaw and a lot of ice. So, we did have repair needed on the kayak launch. And what was determined, Garth helped us through Wade Trim, who was the project manager for it, and the company that we purchased the kayak launch for and installed it, plus Bash, and took a look at it. And really, you can't determine decisively or definitively what the issue was. Was it the ice? Was it the size of the bolt? Was this instead of this, you know? So, and insurance does not cover it. I did talk with Paul and that is an act of God. So, you know, act of God, we, we're covered under the electricity hit. So, apparently, there's different levels of act of God, you know, but.
I don't think he's talked about that.
But anyway, so with that, we did end up, kind of, we talked with the company that, that put in the kayak launch, who said, I mean, we winterized it per their recommendation, which is not as strict as like if you read their, but they said, look, this is how everybody does it. You'll be fine with this. So, we took off part of it, stored it, and left the rest in there. And of course, we had that issue. So, with that, we're going to be removing it and putting it in every year. And they said, look, if you'll remove it and put it in every year with us, we won't charge you for any repairs. This year, I said, all right, let's go ahead and do that. And then, we had a little bit of a repair with Bash Excavating. And I do believe that was an emergency repair that we authorized because I think that, if memory serves me, that was about four, four grand. They had to go in and fix some, might have been a little less than that. I can't recall. But they had to go in and repair some of that retaining while there.
This one other note that my wife and her sister went down to Jen's Park today and they were really impressed with it. Said, the beach is so clean compared to the next door. And so, they come over and use that one, but.
What's next door? Because the East Side Hotel.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing good this year. I mean, yeah.
Would you have to renew that partnership?
Yeah, we're, we, we work with the neighboring property owners. Yep. To make sure that it's in good condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could keep talking about that.
They were all great.
Parks are fun. Parks are fun, guys.
It was a lot of fun going on the tour. Thank you ladies. Any other questions for them? Okay, with that, we'll move on to planning and zoning. And first, we have a trail update here. Claire, if you want to lead us through this a little bit, we've got some components of it. We've got the Three Mile Trail with the OHM contract. And I believe Elizabeth, is Elizabeth there?
Yeah.
There she is. Hi, Elizabeth.
Hello, good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you remember when you saw her, maybe just a few months ago, she was due. So, we have the Three Mile Trail and the substance of that is, we approved the contract plus $100,000 of TART. And so, we're just now with the last amendment going over that. So, we want to take a look at that. We have the Safe Routes to School where we've been working with Pryne and Newhoff and we want to talk about those contracts. And then, the Civic Plaza. So, if you want to kind of highlight and move us through those, Claire.
Sure.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So, for the Three Mile Trail, if you'll recall, we, the Township Board originally approved a contract with OHM for the design engineering for the Three Mile Trail. It was $158,000. That was significantly lower, I think about $100,000 lower than, than the other bids that we received. So, part of the contract was that the supervisor could approve contract amendments up to an increase in $100,000. So, up to $258,000.
At the request of TART.
At the request of TART. You'll recall, all of that is being funded by TART through their fundraising and, and some of the grants that they've secured. So, we, just recently, with the most recent grant amendment that bumped up to, it exceeds the $258,000 threshold. And so, tonight, we would be seeking approval from the Township Board for that contract amendment, contract amendment number four to, to, to enter into that. And I'll turn it over to Elizabeth to speak more or, or Beth.
Well, I was just gonna say, Elizabeth, before you go, I think Julie talked about actually approving the contract amendment and buffer amounts similar to before, but you, you might have had more discussion with her, Elizabeth?
I think we did. And so, I think just in anticipation of the future amendments that are coming our way, I, we anticipate future, but I think tonight, it makes sense to just move forward with the one because it might actually make more sense not to do another amendment, but to have a whole new contract going forward.
Okay.
When, with Segment One pending construction in the, over the coming year, we're gonna need the contract administration contracts. There's gonna be a number of things that would warrant a new contract. So, it might make more sense actually to just approve it as Amendment Number Four at this time.
Okay, that's great. Does anyone on the board have any questions? The OHM Contract Professional Services Agreement Amendment was in the packet. Does anyone have any questions on that?
The only question, I think it, I think I know the answer, but this is paid for by TART and TART has approved the funding.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep. Is there a motion to approve that amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve Amendment Number Four.
Four.
Okay, there is a motion by Walters and support by Lyle. Is, or any further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed by no?
No.
Okay, let the motions know that it passes with M. Cortez dissenting. Okay, and then, moving on to the Safe Routes to School. And we do have Connie here from Pryne and Newhoff.
Yep, yep. So, I, I'll just give a quick introduction and then, we've got our, our engineer here, Connie, to, to give you a little bit more detail. But we have been moving forward with the Safe Routes to School. It's, it's a big project. So, it's been a pretty heavy lift. As you'll recall, we secured the 1.5 million from Safe Routes to School. We re, secured just shy of $800,000 from the MEDC through that revitalization and placemaking grant. So, with those two together, we've got the whole Safe Routes to School infrastructure that was originally envisioned. With the WRAP grant, we were able to actually add a sidewalk connection that will come from that intersection, connect to the library and to the Township Hall, just to get people on, on this side of Three Mile. Also included in the WRAP and kind of added to the project is lighting. That was an important component to TCAPs as well as from a safety component, just to make sure that all of those crossings, intersection locations are, are well-lit and safe, as well as landscaping. So, in, in working with a lot of the property owners, we've got some tree removal included and this will allow us to ensure that we're able to, to replace those trees as well along the corridor. And then, the Civic Plaza. So, and we'll talk a little bit more detail about that Civic Plaza on the next agenda item. But it's been great working with Pryne and Newhoff. They were instrumental in getting us all of the easements and we have secured all of the easements except one. We're just still finalizing one with, with one school. But all of our private property owners, we've secured those easements. And so, it's been just a, a good process. And Pryne and Newhoff is kind of coordinating this, this project that's the Safe Routes to School, but a little bit larger than that. And so, tonight, we're seeking approval for a contract amendment or, or a contract of $25,000. That's gonna get us to the point where we're going out to bid for the project. And really, the, the, I would say, the primary reason that, that the cost was, was higher than kind of what we had originally scoped was, a lot of that easement work was higher than anticipated as well as Pryne and Newhoff is doing the surveying for the Civic Plaza and, and doing some additional work as we kind of increased the scope with some of the placemaking, placemaking efforts that we had through the WRAP grant. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'll also turn it over to Connie, who's got a little bit more information to share.
So, Connie, how's everything going? I think general kind of timeline, now that we have what is considered fully funded on the infrastructure, knock on wood, that's based on estimates, obviously.
Yes.
So, it's kind of like the accountant, there's always like a clause in there, right?
Right.
We're looking at doing that project in 2026. So, kind of take us to where you're at now and, and what you see between now and then construction.
Okay, yes. So, yeah, we have design plans. They're about 90% complete. We have a grade inspection meeting with M.DOT coming up this week, actually. And after that, then, we just do final design revisions to the plans. We fill out all the paperwork for M.DOT, get everything turned in, and it goes through their process. We are expecting to have a bid letting in December or January. The reason why we are looking for that is, as Dan had mentioned, yeah, I don't think he specifically mentioned the Hammond Road project, but these two projects will be done at the same time. So, once we're in construction, they're both in construction. So, we've coordinated our plans with that. We have a little bit of tweaking just to coordinate the grades and the pedestrian signal, push buttons at the intersection, things like that, just to coordinate their job and our job together at the same time. We also have some drainage stuff that's coordinated with theirs. We needed some drainage structures. They didn't, but you know, it, it all worked together. So, this job will, like I said, go out to bid this winter. I think, and Dan didn't really mention it, but they may be a month or two behind on when their job goes. Very high chance that it could be the same contractor, you know, that gets that job and then it's just coordinating them with themselves. But it could be two different contractors. We don't know that. Construction is scheduled, it takes about a month for M.DOT to get that contract in place after. So, say it's in a January letting, the contract award would be in February. And then, we do a pre-construction meeting. And then, the contractor is scheduled to start at the end of May, June. You know, they might be cutting down some trees before that, just the trees that we have along Hammond Road. And then, and then, construction would start right as soon as school gets out. We always try to schedule our Safe Routes to School project so that it's done while school is out. And then, it'll be wrapping up. I'm not sure if that's quite the same ending timeline as Dan's project for the Road Commission, but it should be pretty close. So.
So, this contract, the additional $25,000, takes us through when you get the letting, the bids?
Yes.
And any questions fielding from the bidders?
Yes. If the contractors have questions and stuff, we're on board to take care of that and help do any addendums that need to go out. And then, this also takes us through the pre-construction meeting. So, this gets to that. So, the next phase after that then, which would be next year's budget for you guys, as you go into construction, because this is federal funding, there are requirements for testing and inspection on that. And that generally is about 10% of the construction cost for the construction testing inspection that takes it all the way through. And then, the closeout of the project for Federal Highway and all of the audits that they have on the project. So, that's the next phase after this.
Okay. So, then, when we get the proposals in, we should, we should be looking at 25 to get us to the proposals coming in. And then, from an engineering standpoint, about 10% roughly is the engineering project management through the, through the project?
Through project closeout, yep.
Project closeout, okay.
Yeah. And it takes, I mean, even if the job is done this year, it'll be the next year that project closeout is done. So, your cost actually may be spread out a little over the two budget years, actually, when you're seeing those bills coming in.
Yeah.
Because they actually would go to the Road, the Road Commission is the Act 51. So, they're the food issue area of this. And then, that would come back. So, it'll, there's a lag on all of that, just for your knowledge, for the billing part of it.
Okay. Yeah, that lag is helpful to know because as you mentioned, the trail in the budget this year was short because of how much I was straddling the 2024 year and the 2025 year, how much we'd get done in '24 versus '25. And so, more of that was on to '25. So, that was part of the, the issue with that. Okay, so, we're, yeah, we're getting closer, right?
Yes, yeah. And I believe, Claire, the, the WRAP grant covers the, is that right? Part of the construction engineering or no?
For the Civic Plaza.
For the Civic Plaza and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've got the $50,000 from the Olson Foundation and the $50,000 from Rotary that potentially, depending on what the infrastructure costs are, obviously, that'll go there first. But if we have a gap where, could we be so lucky that the bids were less than what we anticipated, we can still utilize some of that $100,000. And as Claire mentioned, part of the WRAP for the Civic Plaza, but we can use some of that for that if need be. I guess with that, we would look for an approval on the Pryne and Newhoff proposal for the 20, for up to $25,000 for the remaining work through M.DOT bid letting or through, actually, through, I think you said through construct, pre-construction.
Through the pre-construction meeting.
Through the pre-construction meeting, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 25th, 2025 proposal for additional services. $7,220.
20 25,000?
Doesn't it say 7,220?
It's for the Civic Plaza.
That's this is the one that's on your, here you go, this one, on your desk. With so many other things.
Oh, this one.
Prine and Newhoff, yep.
There you go.
Yep.
I was confused, because that one says Walters on the top of it.
Oh, I just wrote that. I just wrote that. Um, I'm sorry, the July 1st, 2025 proposal for Safe Routes to Schools to School Final Design and Bid Package. Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Walters and support by Bartlett. Any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed by no?
No.
Okay, uh motion passes showing M. Cortez dissenting. Thank you, Connie. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll talk about the Civic Plaza and um how lucky we were to receive the RAP grant, for one. Kudos to you, Claire.
So um so included in your packet tonight is a um is a um estimate by Beckett and Raider, um a contract proposal um to do the kind of final engineering for the Civic Plaza. So they're familiar with the project. They did the conceptual plan um for that was used for the grant award um when we were awarded the grant. So um in working with Beckett and Raider, we did have um discussed a number of different kind of methods that were looking to reduce the overall costs of this project. As um as Connie did allude to, we included in our RAP grant is the design engineering. The RAP grant covers the design engineering as well as the construction of the Civic Plaza. So if if awarded tonight, this um this $7,000 line item will be covered under our RAP grant fund um grant funding that we received. Um but we are bidding it together in one package for just this efficiency and coordination. So while Beckett and Raider is gonna be designing the Civic Plaza, they will um Prine and Newhoff will kind of manage that whole contract. So it'll be all um constructed at one time next year in 2026. So it'll all be bid together. Um we're also, we also, though, you'll see in the um that there's a line item to ensure that Beckett and Raider has opportunity to review the draft plan. So like the seating, the details, anything like that, they'll be able to make sure that the that the um kind of the construction all reflects what they had kind of designed originally. Um, we decided that the irrigation will be present, but that's gonna be handled separately. That was Beckett and Raider's recommendation was to not include it. It'll be cheaper to kind of just work with a local company to to um for irrigation as well as, we're not including lighting at this time. We have been working with Grand Trevers Regional Land Conservancy and the Watershed Center, so they're gonna be helping, a meeting with them um next week to go over signage. So they're gonna be helping us with some interpretive signage. The plot, the um Civic Plaza is gonna be overlooking wetlands. We're gonna have some information on wetlands. We're also um designing um rain gardens as the stormwater management. So we're gonna have some informational signage on rain gardens as well. Um, we're also working with TART for some art installation. So they have their art on the TART program, and so we're gonna be um coordinating with them as well on on some um art installation as well at the Civic Plaza. So I think it's gonna be a really cool community amenity once once complete and has the opportunity to kind of grow and expand over time. So like the base infrastructure will be put in as a part of this, but we can always add, you know, new amenities, and it can kind of grow and change um to to reflect community needs. Um, so that's that's all that I had. You'll see that the um the um contract is for 7,220. That includes a lump sum for the construction documents, um plus there's a few hours that they've factored in for bid support and construction administration.
Okay, are there questions on this, or is there a motion on this?
I would make a motion to approve the Beckett and Raider um proposal to prepare. Yeah, I'm gonna have to write one. Prepare construction documents for East Bay Township Civic.
Okay, uh is there support for that motion?
Support.
Okay, there is a motion by Bartlett and support by Walters um for the um East Bay Township Civic Plaza Professional Services Proposal, and that amount is for 7,220. Are there any further questions?
Can I just make one clarification?
Yes.
Included in that is, so it's the 7,220, but there's also a note that they that they have there. If if the hours exceed for either the um bid support or construction administration, which is kind of at the um desire of the township, if we want them to attend additional meetings, and they've provided us with their rate sheet, that that we would potentially go beyond that. So I called Chris DeGud today just to see what his um estimate was, and and he thinks that that they would, he doesn't anticipate really exceeding that 7,000, but he said if the board does want to have like a specific amount, he suggested like 10,000 as a not to exceed amount, just because included in that is is additional hourly.
Okay, so um would there, let's see, who made that motion? Bart Bartlett? Um would you be willing to amend your motion to either do a maximum of 10,000 or some percentage? Or how would you like to handle that?
I'll do 10,000.
Okay. Um Walters, will you support that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a, thank you for the clarification. Um, so there's a motion by Bartlett and support by Walters to include funding up to 10,000 for the Professional Services Proposal from Beckett and Raider for the East Bay Township Civic Plaza. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed by no?
No.
Okay, let the record show the motion passes with M. Cortez dissenting. Okay, um thank you very much for that. You um that that is terrific.
Thank you.
Are you gonna stick around for just a little bit, Claire?
I'll be in the audience, but I'm happy to stay up here if you want.
Nope, you're you're good. You're good. I just wanted to see if you were gonna be around for a little bit with the rest of the discussion. Now we will um move on to the housing incentives, and we have Yaro Brown and Kent Wood here to present some information um on housing incentives, and in particular, the housing residential districts that is um allowed by us under Public Act 237 of, I think I have 23 here, but it's actually 2022.
Yes.
So thank you for being here tonight.
Thanks for having me. I don't know, do I have a presentation that?
You do have the presentation. Um, the board members do have a copy of that on their desk.
Okay.
And it is, looks like this. It has the purple slides. Yes. Great.
Do you want, is there a click?
I think Joe's Joe's taking care of it here.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Yaro Brown. I'm the executive director of Housing North. I have a few members of my team here I'll just introduce. So I have Kent Wood, who's our policy advisor, he's sitting in front. And in the back, Susan Lighthouser-Gee is our tech support for Grand Trevers County. And then we have a policy intern, so I had her come, so she could hear and see how these meetings work. Um and she's helping us with some of the housing tools. So that's Anna.
Well, thank you and welcome.
Yeah. So Kent is gonna help fill in where I um I missed something, but we think most all of you know who we are at Housing North, so I won't go into that. But we're really here to help with the tools and help communities understand the housing tools and be able to navigate using them. So we're really excited. Uh, this is one of the first tools. You're one of the first townships uh to look at this tool, um even though it's new. So I just wanted to celebrate that and acknowledge that.
We were talking, is there only two other places or three that we know of?
My, from what I can tell, and Kent and I have been asking around Frankfurt, the city of Frankfurt was the first, and to my knowledge, you're the only township on this specific tool. Just recently, I believe the Village of Northport is looking at the attainable housing, so similar to this one, but for four units or less.
Okay, and I thought I heard Petoskey too, but I could be wrong.
They might be looking into it. So far, nothing that has been passed that I know of. But I, you know, things change every day.
Sure they do. Thank you.
And I can just kind of walk through it if that's easier.
Sure, sounds good.
Um, so I really, some of the first few slides, the third slide was really to show you what we're talking about here, which is really just different financing mechanisms. The one we're talking about today, so those three different tools are, you know, financing, uh building type and parcel. And then this one that we're talking about today is really a contextual land use, giving a tax abatement. Um, so when we talk about housing and the different tools, there's a lot of layers to how that can happen. Um, and then with these tools, this is one of many, but the idea is to be able to combine them, use them together and for either for sale housing or rental to rental. This particular tool is for rental. Um, and you'll hear more about that combination and what's gonna come next from from the next speakers. Um, so really, this tool was created, it's an, was existing for commercial and industrial, was that right, Kent?
Right.
Um, and adapted for housing. So back in 2022, this was part of the package of five four bills that we were advocating for at Housing North, but also throughout the state, to help rural communities opt in and be able to use this tool. So um the benefit is really to reduce the property tax burden on developers for up to 20, excuse me, 12 years. And in the slide deck, I kind of give you the the eight steps. Oh, thank you. Now I can actually stay on track. Um, so this is the slide I was talking about with the different um layers of these different tools. So I'm, we're really only focusing on two of these today. So you'll hear about the Brownfield TIF at the parcel lever level, and then I highlighted the wrong one here, but it should say residential facilities. The attainable housing and residential facilities are very similar. Um, and then this is just my version of how these tools kind of all work together and for the different reasons. So some can be combined, some are for multifamily, and some are for sale. The one we're talking about today today is for rental rental units. Um, I kind of talked about this. So in this case, the incentive or that when you use this tool is for an investment of 50,000 or more and five units or more. Um, so I'm gonna just go through these kind of quickly. You have them in your packet. A lot of you already probably know this process, but really one of the first steps is to define the boundary. Um, and so I'll go through each one of these kind of quickly, but that is kind of where where you get to determine, and some people might have thoughts about this. In Frankfurt, they did it one way, other communities went, but it cannot, it has to be um not less than one acre. So there are some parameters around that. Um, in the case of Frankfurt, they picked a subdivision for the attainable housing, and then you'll see on a map here. Um, they actually chose, I think the one we're looking at is the, sorry, let's see here. Um, so attainable is in green, and residential facilities actually is the one that is the subdivision. So in that case, they did, they were trying to encourage development in a specific area in the city of Frankfurt. Um, so these are just some factors to consider, and I left a link there about how they defined their boundary. Um, and I think you'll hear about that more. So it can be for a specific project, can be for the entire township, it can be for a neighborhood. Some of the things to consider, though, when determining that boundary are um the notification clause. So you do have to notify everybody in that district by certified mail. So that's where some costs can come into to play. I think what I heard in the Village of Northport, when they did it, it was about four or five dollars to send a certified letter. Um, so basically, public notice, notifying the clerk and the assessor in writing, um, and then you can start accepting applications, and that's already created for you. So there's a link there to that application. Also, if you just Google residential facilities Frankfurt, there's a whole bunch of information on their website. So they really did a lot of this for us, and they just had a meeting and I think a letter I might have shared with you that they use to sort of let people know and have their legal counsel come in and talk about it. So there's some examples out there of how they did this. The next step is to determine the tax abatement. I'm not gonna go over this for you, because I think Beth and her team probably know how to figure that out, but these are just some guidelines um and sort of some graphic to figure out how to do that. But that is, you know, essentially gonna work be case by case for that development. And then you have to, once you have the application, it's already created for you. So you get the application, review and approve it. And these are just the steps that I pulled directly out of the legislation. Um, so once you define that district, do the notification, people know about it, they can actually apply, um and then you review and approve those applications. And then the monitoring and compliance. So you do have an annual reporting, um and you do have to report to the State Tax Commission in this case. Um, let's see, what else did I miss here? Um, of course, if there's any violation reporting, I think you probably have a lot of these systems in place to do this. Um, and again, you are new at doing this, so you might be one of two or three in the state who who start this process, and we learn from you. Um, I believe in Frankfurt, they're still encouraging people to to use this tool. It hasn't actually happened yet.
Oh, they haven't had an applicant yet, then?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay.
So they did it in, I guess, a different way. They created it first and are encouraging um applications. Um, so in a nutshell, I guess this is what you have to know. Um, it's a really important tool. It can help with um property taxes up to 12 years, 50% tax reduction. It's paid by um annually by the owner, so the owner is responsible in this case, and it's for rental units. And um while you handle it locally, you still do need to report to the State Tax Commission. So there is an annual reporting requirement. And um, oops, I skipped one. Um, these are just a reminder of, I guess, the different entities that play a role. So the legislature passed it, the property owner is the one who applies, you ultimately approve it, and then uh report to the State Tax Commission. There is this 5% tax threshold, but I don't want to get hung up on it. I think when we calculated it, it was around like under 40 million, the 5% rule here. But you can also apply um for an extension or for, you know, to if you do exceed that amount or get to that. So it's not anything a hard and fast rule, but it is something to consider um when you're looking at at this tool and the number of applications you would potentially give out. And the one thing else, the other thing I wanted to mention is that these tools pair well, and we use this in some of our template slides, but in this case, this tool pairs well with a lot of things. But what you'll hear about next is the H-TIF or Housing Tax Incremental Financing. So these tools can be used together, and I sort of queued it up for the next presentation, I think, to talk about how and, you know, why this can be really important. I'm not an expert on combining these tools. I'm also excited to learn and that it's a possibility um for you to use. So I'm gonna ask Kent if I missed anything.
Hi, Kent, how are you?
Good. Supervisor friend, uh, thank you. Just just a couple of things, nothing that Yaro missed, but that I just wanted to add or or highlight, I guess. Um, number one, she said it, but this this is a cousin of the industrial facilities exemption. So um, you know, this this program comes specifically from um, you know, and and existing program that that was in the state for industrial, commercial. Uh, it was very heavily used back in the recession, back, uh, you know, '07, '08, '09, and and beyond, when we lost a lot of manufacturing and industrial. And so it it really did prove itself in in a in a great way for uh building and revitalizing industrial facilities and spaces. And really, the the simple way this came about was looking at that program and going, why wouldn't we do that for housing, too? Um, so I did just want to highlight that, um, you know, while, you know, while there, there is a lot of newness to the residential part of this, this program in in general, and the way it works, the way it operates, um, does have precedent, does come from an an existing program. Um, I think that was the only, um, I said two, I can't remember the other one. So she didn't, she didn't miss anything, but I I think that was, I really did want to um just highlight that, that while, you know, while we're still, we've still seen very many communities, and as we mentioned, I think you are the first township to, um, you know, maybe others are are looking at it, but I think to go this far, um, there there is precedent for for this type of program that has been used effectively out there. Thank you.
So that's a little bit like the Brownfield Housing TIF. You know, that was, I mean, now it's used for housing.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. The only difference I would say there is that housing is just within the same uh, you know, TIF program, and it was added on as as an additional use. These are are two separate programs. Uh, you know, the the industrial and the housing are two separate, so there there might be some differences, but like I said, they are, they are cousins. They they will, they should operate very similarly.
Okay, and we heard a little bit about this residential housing district last month, and I did check with legal counsel and had them review it. Um, and um it is correct that with the Special Assessment District um for Public Act or Emergency Services under Public Act 33, that um those are still received on the land. So right now, we receive 100% of whatever we're gonna get on that land, just through straight property taxes. What will happen then, under residential housing district, is it'll actually be segmented and come in three different ways. One is we'll still get the portion on the land, and then um your tax is removed and replaced with with, like, a specific taxes, if I recall that they use the name, the specific tax. In that specific tax, it will still have a portion of your Public Act 33 Special Assessment District. So that's a portion of what you get. So that's two parts. And then the last part, which is abated, that, it, you either would lose that, or in our case, for example, we have worked with the developer to request if they would be amenable to amenable services agreement, which our, our developer is willing to do that. And our attorney has confirmed that he is willing to either draft it or review what their counsel has drafted. So those things were confirmed since the last meeting, so I just wanted to mention that. Does anyone have any questions for Yaro or for Kent?
Well, I guess I got, I'm not sure who's going to answer. So, we would be 100% on a special assessment. Okay. Now, the thing is, the taxable, if this passes, let's say their tax rate now is very little on that piece of property, where are we going to draw the tax number from? Because if they're tax exempt, does that mean, let's say for numbers, you build a $15 million spot down there. Well, let's say you're paying $5,000 taxes on that vacant property. So once these are passed, is that where the tax is locked in on what you're going to pay?
You, oh, go ahead. You go ahead.
I, just simply, and then I'll turn it over to you, Beth, you probably have more specifics, but I, I, I would say it's probably, it's part, part of the equation. I mean, you, you will take, you will take, you know, the current value of that property or that, really it's on the facility, and then, you know, multiply that by half of the state average of commercial, what is it, commercial industrial utility, and then take out, take out the land. So if I'm understanding that correctly, it's a part of it, but...
Well, I'm not understanding how you're saying, but, I mean, I just wanted a pretty well straight answer. You pay $5,000 property tax on a vacant land, okay? Then you build $15 million project in there. What would the, uh, tax assessment be if it was not tax exempt? Is that what we're going to...
So you're not, you're not, okay, you're going to still tax on the value of what they built there. So without this, without this being implemented, they would be paying tax, property taxes, obviously on the value of what they had, right? So if it was, I'm making up stupid, just general numbers, if it were a $10,000 parcel and they built $5 million on top of it, and then they would be paying the assessed valuation on that in total development if they didn't have this. With this, they would still be paying it on the land, but the additional amount, the assessed valuation that they'd be paying the tax on, that tax is removed and a tax is put back, that's about half of that original one.
Okay.
So they're abated, like, half of that.
Okay. So then what you're saying is, if I'm understanding, it's kind of confusing for me, all this, one giving, one taking, but, so if it was a $5 million project, you would pay taxes, or your tax would be based on half of that?
About half of that, plus the land. You get the full land.
Well, yeah, but if land's only based at $5,000...
Well, no, you're, I mean, you're still, it's a different way of saying it. You're still taxed on all of it, it's just they're abating half of it. So yes, you're paying tax on, you're paying about half of what you would have.
Okay. So you're paying half of what you would have towards special assessment?
Yes, but you're getting it back, remember, you're getting it back in your land, you're getting back the half, plus you're getting back the half that they're abated. They're not going to abate any of the special assessment.
So then, if it's a $5 million project, special assessment would be five, based on $5 million?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, you are left hold, instead of, like, if, if there were no abatement under 237, they would pay taxes on the assessed valuation of a $5 million, $10,000 parcel, right, property and, and improvement. They will now, instead of paying that public asset, that SAD and that one payment, now it'll be, okay, there's this much on the land, there's this much in the 50%, and then there's this much from the agreement. Those three together will be 100% of what they would have paid.
And this, this project, you're only using part of Section 19?
Well, I'm, I'm going to let, I'm going to let the, the developers and the proprietors handle that, Mr. Lyle. So, but I, I'm just talking about kind of the law in general, the new, the new program in, in general.
After we talked about it last month, I wanted to have Yaro and Kent here, who are part of Housing North, who are seeing these tools. One, some of them in action, right, like the housing Brownfield TIF, a lot of that in action, and also seeing some of the, the movement and, and other incentives, because the Brownfield Housing TIF is not the only incentive, and in this case, we have a developer who, to get to that gap amount that needs to, that they need to find, they are coupling these two incentives. So I just wanted you to familiarize us some more on that residential housing district. And if the board establishes a district, they still have some time, as I understand it, excuse me, before, you know, the developer, I think, has said it'll be another several months before they have an application before the board. You establish the district, you can still come up with, through that interim period of time, what would be acceptable in an application for you as well. I mean, you don't have to grant the application when it comes through, but it allows them to know that, that township is willing to take a look at an application and a look at using the tool.
Yes, you, you will have to take action at least twice regardless. Once to create the districts and, and the parameters, and then for each application that comes after that.
Okay.
So again, could be, depending on your district, it could be one, it could be, could be multiple, if it's a whole, whole neighborhood or, you know, larger, larger plot, larger area. But yeah, you know, at least, at least two points of action from the board, A, in creating the district, and then B, each application you will be looking at and, and, you know, approving or denying. And then, and then I will also, I will also say also that it does, it does have to go to the state tax commission. The tax commission will also have to approve it or, or deny it. And so there, you know, there is a bit of, at least a kind of a three-step process.
As we were taking a look at, you know, what the size of the district should be, Claire and I were talking about it just briefly internally here, and it's like, okay, do you, is it a district that's just that parcel? Is it a district that has, you know, defined area for, say, good commuting for multifamily? Or do you define a district, for example, we have the growth boundary that has, like, our water and sewer utility infrastructure within it? But would, do you think it would be the safest option for the township? And we talked about it, is instead of going larger and then trying to retract and deal with applications from other places, is maybe starting smaller with maybe a parcel and kind of seeing how that process goes? And then can you add to that district? Can you change that district if it is something that's beneficial?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, from my understanding, that's, that is well within the township's right is to, A, create, you know, create it for, you know, one parcel if you wish, and then, you know, add that, you know, add it together. Again, they, they could be contiguous, they could be non-contiguous if you, if you expand. And then I, I think just, just being cognizant though too of, you know, because there are, you know, this, this program that we're talking about, the residential facilities exemption, as Yaro mentioned, is for five units or more and $50,000 investment or more. And so if you, if you do make a bigger area, but you have one part of that, that's, that's not even going to be zoned for that, that is something to consider, is, you know, that that, that, that your boundary fits with, with that. And if you've got areas that are, that are not larger density, that you can't get five units or more in, or, or, you know, maybe you can, but you didn't necessarily want 10 or more there, you can go with the, the affordable housing program, which is four units or less. And I, I forget the dollar amount there, but it's, thank you, $5,000 in, in investment. So, so that's where, so again, not, not, not to confuse you, but everything you've said is, is correct, and I, I guess I'm just adding that that would maybe be just the one thing to, to consider is, you know, what kind of projects could, could fit in there. And to your point, maybe that makes the most sense then, just, you know, to go with a parcel or two at first, see how it goes, and then, you know, then, then expand as you, as you go forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead.
One question, not for this gentleman, but is it possible to get this slideshow maybe on a, out of a website or something, so you can blow it up? Because this, I was going to go to the eye doctor tomorrow, but...
That sounds good. That sounds good, and we can send it out, for sure.
It has all the links in it, is...
Yeah. And I was just, I'm sorry, with this microphone, I was just going to mention that, I think that's where, you know, this is for a specific project, this tool, but considering the other tools, like you mentioned, so the pilot can't be combined with a lot of the other tools. That's been used most recently with a lot of the units of government, but thinking about what the goals are of the township. So this, I think, is a great opportunity for this development, but that other tool is really for those who might do smaller scale developments or invest in a duplex and need that tax abatement in the attainable housing district. So if you want to learn more, we can share more about those tools, and I think this is just, it's a really good opportunity for your district or for your township.
Okay. Thank you. Claire, do you mind if I ask you a quick question? Kind of taking off on Kent, what Kent was saying, just for clarification. This proposed district is for a project that's already been approved, so we wouldn't have any of those issues with that, would we, where this development tool doesn't align with the use that's been approved?
Yeah, so this is for 20 acres, and that's 240 units that have been approved there. I think it's 10 buildings with 24, 24 units in each, so, so that parcel is, yep, is well within that high-density designation and...
Okay.
And, and, and part of what, you know, Beth and I were realizing is, you know, the Bill Klaus's property that surrounds it, that's, there's a lot of high-density residential kind of in the immediate vicinity, and we have had other inquiries of adjacent parcels, and so we anticipate over time, there, there will be more development, multifamily residential development along Three Mile and throughout that parcel. So there's definitely an opportunity to expand that district in the future if, if opportunity presents, so.
And again, they have to show it through their application and through their performer, performer financials as well, and, you know, Ann Jamison's gone through those, but thank you, Claire, I appreciate that. At this time, I'm going to let the developer and their consultant present, as we've heard from Housing North about the tool, I'm going to let Crimson present about, you know, utilizing this tool of the residential housing district, and if the township does that, you know, they'll have an application in subsequent months. But also their Brownfield plan as well, because, as this township board knows, because we've done a Brownfield plan, they would be looking for us to forward the Brownfield plan on to the county Brownfield authority and to the county board of commissioners. How are you, Susan? This is Susan from...
Hi, everybody. Great to see you again. Thank you for having me. With my vast knowledge of technology, I thought, well, I'll just unplug that stuff and plug it into here, but apparently that's not a thing.
Susan, what was your last name again?
Wenzlick.
Wenzlick.
Yep, from Fishback.
And you're with Fishback.
Yeah, so Logan, who's on the screen, is going to open up the presentation, so you'll be able to see it. Beth also has a copy of it, I just emailed it to you. So I'm just going to start while we're getting it pulled up. Oh, Logan is, there she is. Oh, perfect. Logan, if you want to go straight to the second slide, we can skip the title. So we are here tonight, and, and this is obviously not the first time you've seen me, I'm here for, I've been here a couple of times. We are here tonight to ask you to designate the residential housing abatement district. And we're, I've talked with you before also about housing TIF. So I want to talk about how those two things will work together. Yaro was just talking about layering incentives. Tonight, we're only asking for the housing district designation, but we're also going to talk about the TIF as well. So just as a refresher, these units are priced at rents of $1,150 to $2,240, and that's for one bedrooms to three bedrooms. The numbers that, if you have our application in your packet for a residential district, the rent numbers are slightly different, and that's because the ones in the packet include utilities. Mishda provides a, a formula that we have to use for utility costs, so the application in the packet includes the utilities, but the, the base rent is $1,150 to $2,240. And that's affordable for, in this county, people who earn between 65% and 95% of your area median income. And a couple of slides down, I'll refresh your memory on what our AMI is here in Grand Trevers County. So if we are not able to pull together all these incentives, the 240 units would all still be built, but they would have to be market rate. And the developers did a, a market analysis, and comparable rents for comparable apartment units in this area start at about $2,000 and go up to $3,500 for rent. So we're looking at $1,150 to $2,240, otherwise they would be $2,000 to $3,500 a month. I know it, isn't it crazy? When I think about my first house payment, it was like 600 bucks, and that included taxes. So, all of the funding that we would use, all the incentive money, the tax abatement and the TIF, will, every housing unit will be at no more than 120% of area median income. The tax abatement maxes out for 120%, and then in Grand Trevers County, the housing TIF maxes out at 100% AMI. So our AMIs are going to be between 65% and 95%. I, you know, we'll have a, a few slightly outside of that range when you start adding in the utility costs, but the main thing with, and, and this goes to Mr. Lyle's question, yeah, you know, when your taxes are X dollars a year, those X dollars a year are going to get paid by the developer one way or another. The abatement reduces the, the check that they have to write, so the taxes are still the same. If your taxes are $10,000 a year, they're $10,000 a year. The abatement cuts it to around five, not in this case, but $5,000 a year. So what it does is help with cash flow. And that, we would be asking also to abate the rest of the tax bill, or much of the rest of the tax bill, but that's how those two tools would work together. You abate part of it for cash flow, and then you reimburse the developers for the rest. Logan, can you go to the next one, please?
So I'm just going to, just, if I could expand on that real quickly, because I talked with Ann about this, and I was like, tell me how this money's flowing when you're combining these two. So the project's developed, the, the reduced tax bill is paid for that 12 years, but what they do pay, that 50%, comes back and is collected through Brownfield, and, or they get reimbursement through Brownfield to pay for the infrastructure. When the abatement's done at the 12 years, the tax bill goes up, they have a larger amount that they can pull for reimbursement for that infrastructure.
And I show some of these numbers a couple of slides down too, so you can see how, you know, where all the dollars are going. But just, again, a refresher on the development specifics, 240 apartments, this is our anticipated rents, some of the amenities are listed, so this is about, just shy of a $49 million project. So this is going to have a very high taxable value. Logan, next one, please. There we go. Oh gosh, you can't see that. Okay, so 100% AMI for a, a one-person household in Grand Trevers County is $69,200. For a single person at 120%, which would be the maximum income that anybody in this complex could have, it's $83,000. I mean, this is, this is your local professionals, but, you know, when you get down to 65% AMI, which is sort of the entry-level apartment rent, now that's your service workers, that's people who are making about 20 bucks an hour, it's $41,000. So one of the things that Beth talked with us about is how desirable it was for her to have a range of tenants and a range of rent levels. So we're looking at people from $40,000 to $80,000 a year, basically, in this development project. So a nice range of rents and a nice range of income levels. Logan, to the next one, please. So with the total investment that we just mentioned, about $49,000, right now, their taxable value, and this was before the property transfer from the Klaus's to the developers, their current taxable value is $60,000, $60,770. Once this is built out, and we're looking at... Once this is built out, and we're looking at 2027 for full build-out, it's gonna go up to almost $17 million. So that's a nice jump. And then this is where we break down where the dollars go, and I have another table that shows it on a one-year basis, so kind of a snapshot. But overall, in a 30-year plan, the developers would receive a benefit of $18 million from TIF. The Brownfield Authority would get 811. The township will be reimbursed $295,000 for their trail crossing, and that number is from an estimate that Beth got, and we added a contingency to it, just in case it goes up once you do the bids.
Oh, quickly, that was, that estimate was from TART, and that would be the trail that would be from the entrance of this development. It would go north, and then it would cross over into the land conservancy property to connect up with their trailhead.
That's across Three Mile, right? Okay. The local Brownfield revolving fund is a fund that the Grand Travers Brownfield Authority keeps. That's the last five years of local taxes, and that would be $1.6 million. So the total investment from TIF would be $21,884,000. So that's a lot, but look on the right-hand side there, 64% of that is coming from state dollars. We're bringing some state bucks back up north from Lansing people, and I am about that all day long. So part of the conversation earlier was about how much would go to your special assessments. And so over the 30-year plan, you will keep $4,348,627 for your two special assessments in the township. One of those is your public safety, that will collect about $71,000 a year for 30 years, that's $2,130,000. The other one is a TCAP special assessment, and I didn't do the math on that one, but TCAPs would get the balance, so $2,200,000, give or take. Logan, next one, please. So this is, this next slide is a snapshot of one year, and I took 2032, that's five years into the project, and compared it to what you get right now. So right now, the property taxes that you collect on this project are $2,731 on that piece of property, that whole 20 acres. The Klaus's must have owned that for a million years to have taxes that low. So right now, out of that 2,700 bucks you get in taxes every year, $255 of that supports your public safety millage. Once this project is developed, the amount that the taxes will total per year is $826,000. So you'll go from $2,700 to 820, almost $827,000 in taxes per year. What happens, out of that $827,000 in our estimate for 2032, is the township would get a $47,000 payment for your $295 trail cost. That'll be paid off in about eight years, total. The township public safety millage will get $49,000 out of this, out of the tax abatement, because as Beth just said, you can't abate the entire thing. On top of that $49,000, the developers, under the municipal services agreement that Beth mentioned, will put in another, I think it's on the next slide, but $26,000. So you will get about $71,000 a year instead of $255 for your public safety millage.
Question, what are you basing that on for tax value?
Taxable value of $16 million and change.
16?
Yep.
And we'd get how much?
Well, you'll get $47,000 a year for your trail, about $71,000 a year for your public safety assessment. You will get that $2,731 every year. And you will also get, let's see, the amount that's not eligible for abatement includes that $2,700, it includes the 71, or excuse me, the $47,000 a year for the special assessment for your public safety. That also includes the TCAPs assessment. And then the tax abatement that Yaro was just talking about would return, well, it would abate $300,000 a year of taxes. So that's a check that the developers are not writing. What they're writing is a check for $26,000, I think, for the special tax, the Act III, bleh, this is really late, for your public safety abatement, sorry. So that will still total $71,000. The amount that the developers would have returned to them from the balance after the abatement, after the payments to the township, is $340,000. Beth will have this, a copy of this presentation, she can share it with all of you. So ordinarily, the residential housing tax abatement is about 50%, including on special assessments. As Beth said, the balance of that 50,000 will be coming back to the township under a municipal services agreement. It's $28,000, now that I'm on the right slide. So your abatement, or excuse me, your assessment for your public safety, like I said, will go from $256 a year to about $71,000 a year, every year. Logan, I'm sorry, could you go to the next one? I just read off the whole slide. There we go. Because I'm changing it on my screen, but not on yours. So $256,000, or $256 to $71,000 a year, that's not a bad deal.
Well, and I think, and honestly, I mean, you know, a lot of people say townships do things for financial reasons. The one thing that I always tell them, and I'm pretty sure they don't believe me, but it is true, I've never seen this board make decisions based on what their revenues would be for taxable value on developments. I think that we've always, I've always seen this board and the Planning Commission make those decisions based on what's being added to the community, and the Planning Commission, what's allowed under the zoning ordinance, but also the township board, and what is valuable for the community. And those are good points to point out.
Right.
But though, I'll say, I think what's really the most of value to us is the ability of our residents who are earning between that 40 and 80-some thousand dollars to have enough place that they can afford to live.
Yep. And with the reduced rents, that, you know, that helps people save money to buy a home. If, you know, once they have enough saved up and they can move up to the next level, you know, we all lived, probably all of us, lived in rentals when we were in our 20s, and then bought, you know, I bought my first house at 29, so that $600 house payment. So yes, it's not all about the dollars, but I know that the public safety assessment was a huge concern for you, and so I wanted to address that.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Logan, can you go to the next one? Actually, I think that's it.
Can you go?
Yeah. Sure, Mindy, which one?
Hold the numbers on it, that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Are you checking my math? I know you are.
Doesn't make sense.
And I'll send you out the presentation, as I said. If you forwarded that to me, Susan, I can send that out to the board.
Yep. And we have provided a copy of our Brownfield plan to Beth for review and to Ann Jamison, so that has the TIF tables in it. Mindy, you can check the numbers that way, too.
And that is in our packet.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Mm-hmm, it is. We also have, we have Maxwell Cameron here, too. I do want to introduce him. Maxwell, if you'll just say hi to our board here, who is with Grand Travers County with economic development. He works with Ann Jamison on Brownfield, with the Brownfield Authority. And I think you've been looking at some of this information, too, with Ann, and I don't know if Anna's with us remotely tonight or not, or maybe she's just watching us on the live feed rather than the Zoom, but anything else that you wanted to add, anything you wanted to add about the housing initiatives or the project, or going through the Brownfield or anything?
Sure. Again, my name's Maxwell Cameron, Community Development Coordinator for Grand Travers County. And just to kind of echo what you pointed out, Supervisor Friend, with regard to the ability to bring affordable housing to your community through this initiative, it's great that your township is looking at abatements, as well as layering those incentives with the housing TIF opportunity, and the ability to work with developers to provide affordable housing options for residents is fundamentally important to the economic health of our communities in our entire region. And so, you know, we really look favorable, we really look favorably on projects such as this, that do really provide ladders of opportunity for folks to move into communities, and then hopefully move into, into housing and become, you know, community members, long-term property owners, et cetera. So this is a really good project, and Susan and the Fishbeck team have been great to work with, the developer, and we're, you know, I was excited with some of the questions that you guys were asking tonight about the incentives and the abatement districts. That's sort of new to me as well, so got a chance to learn a little bit about how that would work with housing TIF, so it's a very exciting project.
Well, thank you. Any questions for Maxwell? Maxwell, you've been with the county, what, maybe six months now? Are you here a year yet?
Not yet, yeah.
Awesome, close, right?
Seven, eight months, somewhere in there.
Okay, very good. It's nice having you onboard, very nice having you onboard. From the Detroit area, right?
Correct, yep.
Good. Any questions for Maxwell? Okay. I was just gonna ask Susan if either Steve or, it's Kevin, right?
Correct.
If Steve or Kevin wanted to add anything.
I'm just, I'm here with already said, we're excited about the project and very appreciative of the collaboration. This is kind of a win-win for everybody. It's good for us because it allows us to continue doing what we do for a living and providing housing, which we couldn't do in today's environment, today's interest rates and inflation for labor and material, both projects just don't pencil without getting some help with the gap financing, and that's what these programs do. And as everybody knows, it's a, it's a national endeavor now to try to figure out how to provide affordable housing, because it's just, it's evaded every state and every city. So, and a lot of municipalities will say, yeah, we want affordable housing, but then when it comes down to it, for whatever reason, not in my backyard, or, you know, concerns about, you know, taxes, whatever the reason is, they want it, but they don't support it. And to find, I mean, that's really why we came here, because we were told that you supported it, and the fact you redid your zoning ordinance to accommodate higher density to allow for projects like this. So, you know, hats off to all of you, and if you can see your way into moving this project forward, we couldn't be more pleased to participate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Okay.
I'm getting tired of seeing you.
Well, I think, and Susan, did you have anything else?
Yeah, everybody's dragging right by at this point, but I wanted to say just a word about timing. So tonight, we would be asking for designation of the district. In August, we will take the Brownfield plan to the Brownfield Authority, and late August or September, I think September, we're going to, provided that the Brownfield Authority approves the plan, we would be going to the county commission for a public hearing and approval from the county commission, and then we'll come back and ask you for the certificate for the residential housing tax abatement. There is, we're kind of taking all the steps one at a time as much as we can, but we will be back here next month with you to also ask for your approval for the Brownfield plan itself. So at that point, I'm happy to answer questions about the Brownfield plan, tax abatement, whatever you've got, or tonight, if you have them.
Okay, let me just make a quick note, in August, when is the Brownfield meeting in August?
28th.
The 28th?
Something like that, is that right?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was after our meeting or well after our meeting, okay?
Yep, it comes after your meeting.
Okay, I'd forgotten that, because we meet on the 11th, so basically, we would consider then next month on the August agenda would be your Brownfield plan, okay?
Yes, if you would, please.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, Susan.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
All right, thank you all so much.
I have one question, just, this is a 12-year plan?
The tax abatement is a max of 12 years, the Brownfield plan is 30.
Okay. So what happens after 12 years?
Then the full amount of taxes get paid, there's no abatement anymore, but the numbers would still stay basically consistent for the township. It would still be the 71-ish thousand for the public safety, the $2,700 in baseline taxes, and the development team would have reimbursement of the full, it's like $600,000 a year.
Do rents go up?
The rents have to be limited for Grand Travers County to no more than 100% AMI. So we probably won't even see any rents for 120% for that $69,000 of your AMI for the county.
Yeah, I get what you're.
And the rents are limited by Mishta under a Brownfield plan, so they can't go up any higher than what's affordable for that income range of 65 to 100%.
That's right, for the Brownfield plan.
And that's for 30 years.
For 30 years.
Yep. So rents are limited to 100% AMI for 30 years.
Remember, the rents might change because they're a percentage.
Well, yes.
Right.
But, yeah, you're right in asking, like, what happens after the 12 years, but the limitation on the rent amount continues, it's there for the Brownfield as well as for the abatement.
Yep.
Just don't want to see what's happened, and, you know, you had Trail 45.
Exactly.
And went to condos and.
And everybody's head exploded when that one, yeah.
And, you know, that comes up a lot, and what was explained to me about Trail 45 was developed under a different incentive mechanism.
Yep. That was a five-year abatement, and so when their five-year abatement was up, they said, okay.
Yep.
Okay, all holds removed. Mindy?
I can't read this.
I can't read.
Give you a magnifying glass.
No, it's terrible.
What's that?
This is terrible to try to read.
Right, I know, I know.
My question is this, 30 years, has the developer paid back? Is there five years of?
Yes.
Is it 29 and a half years? Where are we at here?
That one, I'll ask Logan, hopefully she's still on. The 30-year maximum is developer reimbursement from state taxes for all 30 years and from local taxes for 25. The last year of, last five years of local taxes goes to the LBRF. The LBRF cannot collect state taxes, only up to the Eagle amount, which was pretty tiny, it was like, I don't know what, $3,000 or something off the top of my head, but they can continue to collect the Mishta taxes to the develop, are you following me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, yeah, the local taxes will go into the LBRF because they can't collect any more state, and the state taxes minus the local taxes for the last five years will go to the developer.
So is the developer whole after that, or not? Sounds like they're not.
I don't believe they.
Shaking his head, no.
Yeah, they're not, you know, according to the potential rent loss table from Mishta. So at the end of 30 years, they would need to decide, can rents, you know, do we need to take rents up to, you know, in a 30-year, in the 30-year life of a residence, yeah, I mean, that's a long time. They're gonna need new kitchens, they're gonna need new carpeting, they're gonna need all the stuff. So at the end of 30 years, do they need to raise their rents up to market rates? I'm not gonna be here, you're not gonna be here. I hope we all get to retire in 30 years.
Well, I mean, I think the point is that you're making 30 years is a long time. Economic conditions and housing may change in 30 years, and that's what we're hoping. I mean, really, any amount of housing is beneficial to our community, even if this developer were going to say, we're doing all market rate, it's still beneficial. It's all housing, I think Yaro says that, too, right? It's all housing. Now, what we really like to see is something that is targeted for that workforce, workforce housing, because it's more immediate, right? If we just had everybody do market rate, yeah, it's gonna impact, but it's gonna take a long time to impact those rents and for income to come up, to where it becomes what's considered affordable.
Well, and.
Way too, way too long, I was just gonna say.
Yeah, and, you know, 30 years from now, when all these TIF plans are expiring, all at once, all across the state, it's gonna be another affordable housing crisis. And so the legislature's gonna have to figure out some way to either continue to, you know, to keep the TIF program going and keep building new housing, but what do you do with all this, you know, housing that's already been built, and then, you know, the roof?
Well, again, we don't know what the, what the rest of the economy will do.
Yep, exactly, who knows what. Yep, exactly, who knows what.
But what we're, but what the intent is, is to get affordable housing into effect now so that we have, you know, honestly, you do have teachers who, they're not hiring because they can't, or aren't accepting the jobs because they can't find the housing. So.
I was in Petoskey today on a panel with the guy who's the president.
Thank you, Yarrow.
Thanks, Yarrow. President of McLaren Health in Petoskey, who's president of the hospital system there, and he said, one of their biggest problems is that their nurses can't afford to live in Petoskey, and so they live, you know, in Otsego County or in Sheboygan or all these places all over, and if you have an emergency where everybody needs to get there, they can't get there in time, you know, to get an OR prepped and to get, you know, save somebody who's on their way in an ambulance with a heart attack. So, housing is a huge crisis for the hospital system because their staff, their own staff can't afford to live close enough to get there in an emergency.
Yep.
So, my question is very specifically, how much is the, that five years of local site revolving fund leaving the developer on the table? How much is the developer leaving on the table because of the five-year grant from the local site revolving fund?
That'll be in the potential rent loss table, which has much larger print. Or Logan, if you are still online, if you could chime in?
Yeah, you'll be able to see, I'll see if we can get the Excel of this so that you can really blow it up quite a bit more, or at least the PDF. You can see it now if you blow it up on the PDF that we have.
Yeah, and go ahead, I mean, you should certainly share the plan with Mindy or I can send it.
Hear me if I chime in?
Oh, there you are.
Hi, Logan.
This is Logan, nice to see you all. I just wanted to clarify that we did calculate that their reimbursement would get fully reimbursed over 30 years. That being said, in the potential rent loss table, we only are calculating a subset of units in there, whereas they're agreeing to income qualify 79% of their units. So, if I just count up really quick, there's only 70 units being calculated in the potential rent loss calculation, whereas a total of 190 are gonna be income qualified under 100% of area median income. So, essentially what I'm saying is, there's not enough taxes simply put to reimburse how much potential rent loss the project could qualify for. So, instead of scaring everybody off with a super huge number and showing a super huge unreimbursed balance at the end of the day, we just included a subset, so it kind of equals out to be fully reimbursed over the 30 years. We also worked really closely with Ann Jamison at the county to make sure that the project actually needed the 35, sorry, actually needed the 30 years of support, so, and took a look at the developer's internal rate of return and debt service coverage ratio, so all those metrics equaled out and follow the guidelines to not being, you know, overly enriching a developer. It's very, just what the project needs. So, I hope that kind of helps answer your question, I'm happy to share my screen and show any other numbers if needed.
And that's kind of what we were going back to saying is, you know, the applica, even for, we're talking about the Brownfield here, even with the application for the abatement, you know, they'll have to prove through that pro forma that they're not overly enriching a developer, that the numbers are there for the needed gap of the financing. And Ann handles that for the Brownfield with the county.
Yeah, I understand that, I was just trying to figure out, you know, how to tell our taxpayers that this is not handout to the developers and that actually they're still, you know, if you look at market rate rents, what they're still could be charging, right? And that they're not receiving that money, so that's what.
Yeah, I mean, sorry to interrupt, I was just gonna say, if I do the potential rent loss for all of the units that they're keeping under 100% of AMI, the output number is 32.1 million and they're only seeking 12.7 of potential rent loss. So, you can see there's a large delta between what MISTDA indicates that they could have received like that lost revenue if they were to go after like market rate instead of these lower rents.
Okay, you're good.
Yep, yep. So, what I'd like to do now is, we do have this scheduled for a public hearing, so it is 9:04, and I'd like to open the public hearing on the establishment of our rental housing district. And this is located at 2633 North Holliday Road.
North Three Mile.
I'm sorry, North Three Mile Road. No, I was just looking for the, it is parcel 28-03-219-0026. So, with that, is there anybody who would like to speak on this project? Okay, seeing none, it's 9:05, and I'll close the public hearing. And then I'll bring that back to this board. As you've heard, you'll have before you in August their Brownfield Plan for potential recommendation by this board to the Brownfield Authority and to the Board of Commissioners. So, and they would, that would take care of the Brownfield portion of the financing tool, the incentive tool. But also, we have the residential housing district request, which we have heard a lot about, and we've had the public hearing, and I believe the developer would prefer us to take some action if we feel ready to do so on the housing district request. Again, that's not their application, this is not saying they're getting that abatement, but this is establishing that district for a potential abatement and application. And we do have a resolution for that. It is on your desk, and it says Resolution of Concurrents. It talks about the, oops, I'm sorry, let me see this. That is the Brownfield. Yep, it is in here, Resolution, I'm sorry, here it is, Resolution Establishing a Housing, Residential Housing District.
Question before we get into that, that I ran across on sheet 232.
Are we on page 232 of the packet?
232 is what it says.
Okay.
Table one somewhere.
Okay.
You find it?
Yeah.
Okay, the question I have is, these are the costs that the developer is gonna pay, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The one question I have is, under sanitary sewer, mains, connection, water mains connection, is that supposed to include benefits also?
Yeah, they'll pay the benefits and they'll get the Brownfield, Brownfield supports those benefits.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because 224 benefits is $873.
At how much?
Eighty, $873,600 for 224 benefits.
And how much a benefit?
$3,900.
But you have to double that.
Yeah, but what I'm asking has, because when I hit that number, it's quite a ways off from what it's gonna cost for the piping and everything, unless I'm misunderstanding what's written. You understand what I'm saying?
I do. If the benefit fees are 873, then you're at like 1.6. You know, again, these are, these costs do move somewhat, so, I mean, I would.
I mean, can somebody address that from?
What he's saying is basically you're underfunded in the summary of costs, on your summary of eligible costs. Your water and sewer is going to be more than the, actually, I'm so sorry, that's not, I don't know that that's accurate, Glenn, because.
If you double it, it's 1.747,200, $1,747,200 for the benefit for both water and sewer.
They've got 2.6 million in here.
Well, that's, but we're just talking benefits, we're not talking any piping and.
Yeah, but they've got about a million in the piping.
A what?
They've got about a million in the piping.
Okay, but I guess I'm not explaining this right. When I look at the cost, sanitary sewer mains and connections, 1.5, water mains and connectors and connections, 1,68,000. I said, is that including benefits? If I understood you right, you said yes.
I'm, it says and connections, mains and connections, so it would have benefit fees, which would be about, so they've got 2.6 million planned in there between both of them, and your benefit fees are gonna be about?
1.1 million 747,200, but then you got all the piping and stuff, is that not included in that?
So, and by benefits, I assume you're talking about TAP fees?
Yeah.
Okay, TAP, yes, we've got about 2.0, I wanna say we're at around 2.6 for our TAP fees, and then baked into our construction costs is where our internal piping and all that stuff was.
Okay, so that's where all the piping comes from.
Yeah, we separate the TAP fees out separately. I was trying to negotiate those.
Okay. Just for future knowledge, we've never negotiated TAP fees, so, sorry.
Just to let you know.
So, okay, good question, and that provided some clarification. Yep, Mindy?
This resolution versus this map on page 212. This resolution only has the one parcel, are we using both parcels?
We are, that, that is, I was going to correct the parcel numbers on that, it'll have the same address, but we'll put, let me go, where did you find the map on it?
The two parcels were combined, Mindy, under, into one.
Okay, this should be part of this, because it's all about 19.9 something acres.
19.99.
And when I pulled up.
Last tenth of an acre.
When I pulled up this parcel ID of the 28-03-219, it is 19.9 whatever, and I confirmed that with assessing that that's the right parcel number. But then I saw this too, and I thought, well, we better check that, but I thought we could check it.
Can I come over?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's our old map, we updated that one. So, it shows it combined. Yeah, the one in the plan should be that one.
Sure.
Because we updated the one, and, yeah, you've got the old one, if it shows two parcels, you've got the old one.
It might be because we also have the environmental in here too, did that have a different map?
Yep.
I don't know if this is beneficial or if you can see my screen, but this is the corrected approximate boundary and parcel number that we received from the local assessor after the two were combined. So, this is what's presented in the Brownfield Plan.
Here.
Yep, it is correct in the Brownfield Plan. What page is that, Mindy?
212.
So, that is from, that is from.
I know, it's a lot of pages.
212 is from.
I'm fine with it then, I just wanted to double check before.
It might be from the housing, the residential housing district application, and we didn't have the updated map, parcel number and map yet.
What resolution number are we on?
We are on, we did 14, so we're on 15.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-15, the Resolution Establishing a Residential Housing District with the map that's on page 228.
You don't have to do the map because it already describes it in here.
Without the map then.
Support.
Okay, motion is made by Walters, there's support by M. Cortez. Is there further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, Ann.
Walters.
Yes.
M. Cortez.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yep.
Friend.
Yes. All right, very good, well, thank you. We really appreciate, you know, this is a relationship after so long when you're working together, and so we appreciate the constant communication, and also, we understand the timeframe that's set out. We will consider the Brownfield Plan next month in August, and then we'll look for your later application of the residential facilities exemption and certificate, correct? And then we'll be doing some research in that to make sure, because there's certain resolution things that have to be in that one too, so, that works. Now, I have lost my agenda in all of this shuffling, but I do believe that we are, thank you, ma'am, we are to the RRC Market Strategy. Hi, Claire, how are you? Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Okay, so, presented in front of you tonight is the Marketing and Communications Strategy for.
Thank you, Noah.
Township. You'll see that this is, you know, there's a lot of goals or themes that kind of go across. It's got a lot of similar themes to what we have in the Economic Development Strategy. You'll see a lot of themes that transcend through the master plan. So, we had Travers Connect assisted us with the development of this, this was part of their contract for the year. We, I think it's really good timing because we just are bringing on a communications specialist, and so this is kind of the township taking a more proactive role in taking a look at how we're communicating to the public. We just recently undertook branding and marketing with the Beach District, with the Farmer's Market, and so this is kind of taking more of like a coordinated look at how we're communicating and really what our, what our communication methods are. So, in talking with the Pablo, the coordinator with RRC, he talked about, it's not so much about like traditional marketing, like where a like for-profit company would be looking at, but it's more like, how are we really telling the story of the township and taking in the information of like what the residents value and then communicating that back out, as well as what are the, kind of the nuts and bolts of our communication strategies with the public? Like, how are we using social media, how are we using, you know, newsletter, how are we using press release, those types of things to really make sure that we're engaging in a meaningful way with the community when there are input opportunities? So, happy to answer any specific questions that you have on the strategy, but again, we did base this, they based this on a lot of the outreach that's already been done through our Beach District effort, through our master plan, through the Economic Development Strategy, and came up with this, with this plan, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions for Claire on the draft marketing plan? Again, an RRC's required document, and thank you for the work that went into it and basing it on best practices and the work in utilizing Travers Connect and staff as well.
And I will, I will mention that the MADC has reviewed it, they're comfortable with it, so it meets all of their best practice requirements and.
Okay, and we have sent this over to the communications consultant that we have engaged with. Is there a motion to accept the draft East Bay Township Marketing Plan?
Actually, it would be approval of the.
I'm sorry, approval of the.
It would become, it would no longer be draft if it was approved.
To approve the East Bay Charter Township Marketing Plan.
I make a motion to approve the marketing plan presented.
Okay, is there support?
Port.
Okay, there is a motion by Bartlett and support by Lyle to approve the East Bay Township Marketing Plan. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed by no? Okay, very good, did you, did you vote?
No.
I didn't hear you vote, did you vote?
No.
Did you vote no or you didn't vote?
Get away.
I'm sorry, I, so, let's do a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Bartlett.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yes.
Cortez.
No.
Walters.
Yes.
And Friend.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you.
Appreciate your staying late for the meeting. With that, we come to our last agenda item, which is moved from the consent calendar, and it just has to do with the budget amendments. You have two. One is requires board approval, and these are adjustments that take into effect the contracts that we approved tonight as well. They are on page 51 and 52 of the board packet, you're welcome. And so, the first one takes into account. And, so, the first one takes into account, number one, an increase of $40,000 in revenue because of the TART reimbursement of those OHM expenses, but then it also includes the expense of the OHM contract, the Pryne and Newhoff, Newhoff amendment, and the Beckett and Raider contract, that is $8,000 there. I can change that to 10,000 and just update that because we did change that resolution to 10,000. So what I would do there is just increase that by 2,000 and that would increase it to like 120, 130,800, basically. And then it has also the purchase and installation of the bench swing at the Parks Commission, the Grace McDonald improvements. It was transferred to GENS to cover that between line items for them. It has some use of contingency and the increase of consulting fees for the Parks Commission. So that is journal entry 26923. And then the second one is a budget amendment that is done in line with the General Appropriations Act that allows us to transfer the amounts that we needed within a certain threshold. And of course, we can only adjust salaried line i, or wage line items by a certain amount without changing underlying wages and capital by a certain amount, but other things we're allowed to change a bit within some criteria. These all fit within that criteria and so this was, this budget amendment is 26920. And that one has been done according to that General Appropriations Act and is before you for review approval. So is there a motion on the two journal entry budget amendments? Yeah. Oh, you don't have it? Oh, okay. You found it, right?
I found it. So which one were you changing to the additional $10,000?
This one because that Beckett and Raider...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, okay.
I had rounded it up from the 7,000 something it was to 8,000 and the motion was for 10,000. So I'll just make that an even amount.
I would make a motion to approve the budget adjustments.
Those are the numbers right there.
26923 and 26920, to include the $10,000 that we talked about.
Okay, there's a motion, is there support?
Port.
Okay, there's a motion by Bartlett and support by Walters for approval of the two budget amendments by the journal entry. Ann, would you do, is there further discussion? Ann, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Bartlett.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Cortade.
Yes.
Lyle.
Yep.
Friend.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Our next board meeting is July 29th. We have a special meeting with Acme Township and, well, I typically try to like to get dates from everybody. It was really hard between the consultants and two different boards, so Acme could do the 29th, so we kind of rolled with it. I do understand that we'll have a quorum, so, does anybody here know that they cannot make it? You'll be able to make it?
Not sure.
Okay, all right. Mindy?
I think so.
Okay. You will, okay.
Lord willing and the great no rise.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Well, with that and then our next meeting, I believe it was August 11th after that, so if there's...
I got one question.
A question? Sure.
You know, all these projects are going in, you got 224 houses here, you got 200 and whatever it is over there. When do they stop and look at the roads? When is the road commission going to do something about the roads? Because right now, you can't get across the airport road anytime during the day. It backed up in three...
Yeah, I, I understand the point and we do hear that from people. I would say that that's probably best answered earlier in our meeting when we had the road commission here, I would, but just to be real brief, from our standpoint at the township, as you know, the roads are looked at by the road commission through the planning commission process and so that's when they do it. They do an analysis of that development, their curb cuts, the, all of the things. Does it, you know, does the number of road counts or traffic count, you know, warrant certain things like a light or a stop sign or whatever it may be? That's all the way, that's done through the road commission, so with that...
They go through all...
Well, hold on, I want to, I don't want to get too much into a broad discussion on roads and the development. I mean, I think we're, we don't have that on the agenda at this point, so we can definitely bring the road commission back and answer that and Claire and answer that, but, yeah, give me your two-second question.
No, don't worry.
Okay, all right. If, if nobody objects, then we stand adjourned. Okay, thanks.